Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pew, Mayor Protem, and District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Welcome to September 10th City Council meeting. We're pleased that you all are with us. We are going to begin this meeting as we begin all of our proceedings with city council meetings, and that is by invoking God's grace on these, this meeting. So I'm going to ask Pastor Joshua Cantrell from Cedar Road Church of Christ, come forward. Welcome, sir. You will come to this podium.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we thank you so much for being with us this morning. We thank you so much for allowing us to wake up, being in good health. We ask and pray that you bless our meeting at this time, our mayor, all our elected officials, continue to be with them and their families, their loved ones, continue to just bless them. We ask and pray that we can continue to support them, continue to love them, continue to encourage them. We thank you so much for the country in which we live in. We thank you so much for the grace you continuously give us. We just thank you and we just, and we just love you with all our hearts. And again, we just ask you bless our meeting this morning. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Pastor Cantrell, thank you very much for your presence and thank your congregation for sharing you with us this morning. All right. Next, we've got probably the sharpest dressed bunch of pledgers that we have had the pleasure of being here. So I'm going to ask the second graders of Emmanuel Preparatory School of Math and Science to come forward. And the rest of you, if you would, please, please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Thank you, gentlemen. If you would, turn around, face the audience, and just give us your name and how old you are.
My name is Julian Lamar Brooks, and I am seven years old.
My name is Jacob Viatto-Chambers-Daniel, and I am seven years old.
My name is Ellen Renssman, and I'm, I am six years old.
My name is Noah Dean Hudson, and I am six years old.
My name is Roger Schumate, and I am seven years old.
My name, my name is Amir Aldi Fowler, and I'm seven years old.
My name is Edony Tate Poore, and I'm seven years old.
My name is Giancarlo Alejandro Houston, and I am seven years old.
My name is Jack Anna Lawrence, and I'm seven years old.
Outstanding. And gentlemen, if you would, if you would introduce yourselves, we've got, they've got some, they've brought some folks along with them. We want to, and tell us a little bit about Emmanuel Prep.
My name is Alonzo Taylor. I'm the second grade teacher, as well as the leadership, dean of leadership.
My name is Carlos Coleman. I serve as the president of Emmanuel Prep and the founder of the school. And along with us, we have a couple of staff members, Tiffany, Tiffany Hunter, who is our new administrator, and also a parent, Kimberly Poole as well. So it's a pleasure to be here. We have an all-boys school that's focused around STEM. And our, our school is all-boys of color. We're open to all individuals, but we are focusing on them and how boys learn and trying to prepare them to excel in our community.
How long has the school been open?
Since 2016 is when we were founded, fall of 2016.
Fantastic. Well, these are sharp-looking young men.
Thanks so much.
I'll tell you what, guys, you come back anytime because we enjoy well-mannered, sharp-dressed men, I promise you.
Thanks for having us.
Thank y'all.
All right.
Y'all give them one more round of applause. All right, we're still waiting on a quorum. I know we've got one counselor that's in route. We got one, there we go. All right, in that case, we will, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion, any edits that anybody needs to make? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved. And before we get to the audit, I'm going to ask council's indulgence and pull up number one on the city manager's agenda, the retiree health insurance plan. Mr. Hughley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good morning to the members of council. I believe we've got some representatives, a representative here from the retiree benefits committee, and we've got our HR director, Aretha Hollowell, here. And Mr. Mayor and council, I am going to be asking you for approval to renew the Medicare eligible healthcare plan benefits and the United Healthcare Medicare Advantage Plan. United Healthcare has offered the, the city a flat renewal of the Medicare Advantage PPO plan that resulted in no increase in premium rates and no plan design changes. The retiree health benefits committee, Shaw Hankins, who represent us, our consultant, and of course, our HR director recommend approval. And I will just mention that two vendors made bids for coverage.
We have a, we have a motion to approve.
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve, but any, any discussion? All right, Bruce, if you would, cue it, and councilors, please register your votes.
But, and so, Mr. Mayor?
It is approved, but please continue with the-
Yeah, because I do want those here or watching by television to know what rates we're talking about. But two vendors made bids for coverage, Anthem Insurance and United Healthcare. And United Healthcare presented another strong bid for coverage for the calendar year 2020. So the post-65 retirees' health insurance costs will remain flat in 2020, and there are no plan design changes. So I'm going to repeat that. The post, the post-65 retiree health insurance costs will remain flat in 2020, and there are no plan design changes. The retirees' monthly rate will remain at $130 a month for the city subsidized retiree groups hired prior to July 1, 2001, and $173.33 for the unsubsidized retiree group hired on or after July 1, 2001, the same as in 2019. The out-of-pocket maximum will remain at $1,000 annually. Because of United Healthcare's competitive bid, their excellent customer service and stable consistency, it was determined to remain with United Healthcare. And so just to repeat the rates again, the retiree monthly rate will remain at $130 a month for the city subsidized retiree group hired prior to July 1, 2001, and $173.33 for the unsubsidized retiree group hired on or after July 1, 2001. The out-of-pocket maximum will remain at $1,000 annually, and that is with United Healthcare. And so, Mayor and council, we've got our HR director here and a representative, Mr. Larry Campbell, from the retiree group. I will yield to you.
Yes, good morning, council and mayor, and Mr. City Manager. Thank you all so much. This is good news for the post-65 retirees. United Healthcare continues to remain a, just a positive force for our retirees in terms of being competitive with the premiums, the annual premium rates, and no change in plan design. This is extremely good news for the retirees. The city manager did note that there was another competitor, Anthem, who also submitted a competitive bid. We've been with United Healthcare since calendar year 2012. And since 2012, United Healthcare has proven to be just a tremendous partner for our post-65 retirees. And this is really good news, and I appreciate the city manager's emphasis because when you retire, a lot of times it's difficult to reach retirees. But they do white city council meetings. So, so this is very important, and this is very good news for them, even though we'll send this out to them in writing by sometime in October. But this is really, really good news for the retirees, and I thank you all for passing the resolution. Mr. Larry Campbell, he is on the retiree benefits committee, and he is the president of the Retiree Association. I want him to at least greet the group this morning. Our chairperson, Perry Johnson, she's out of town and was not able to be here this morning. So Larry is here, and I want him to at least greet the group this morning.
Thank you, Aretha.
Good morning, councilor and mayor.
Good morning.
City manager and all the rest of you. It's always good to be back. This is, as last year, this is another good year from the retiree standpoint. Not only was the premium stay the same, but as I said last year at this time, that $1,000 out-of-pocket is a real blessing to us. So we're excited about being able to keep that for another year. So again, thank you all for your support. We look forward to another year, be back at the same time next year, with good Lord willing. And when you all get ready to retire, ten bucks a year, you can belong to our association. So, again, thank you all.
Counselor Davis?
Mr. City Manager, I just have to commend you, the staff, the administration, Director of Human Resources, the Employee Benefits Committee, just the history here, a lot of, you can't let this go unsaid, but the history here, I mean, this administration's government's been working hard. Some of the biggest challenges we've had have been with healthcare, the healthcare benefit and the benefits plan, not only keeping that stable with the healthcare for the employees. And there's been some tough, some tough challenges there and tougher this council, and I mean, all the way around. But in the last two years, I mean, you can't, you, you just got to state it. I mean, it's just, things have stabilized, it's looking a lot better. Things have really turned, I mean, I'm hoping, knock on wood, it's turned a corner from that standpoint. But there's some good things happening now. It kind of went through the pain, and now things are a lot better. So I commend the administration, the staff, or your leadership and all for, for the good things happening there. And certainly, we've got some good guidance from the people we're working with, and good things are happening. So that can't go, you, you, you got to notice that, and it can't go unsaid. So I would like to ask one question, though, in line with that. I think I know the answer, but from a national average standpoint, I don't know if anybody knows, but we're, you know, I would think that this city, the city of Columbus, the government, the city of Columbus is doing pretty good. And that being said, it's not only that, it's, it's, this is not like a, correct me if I'm wrong, was, it's a group plan somewhat, but it's not. It's, it's the employees' healthcare plan, and they pay into it, it's their plan. It's not, I mean, and I don't want to say that's unique, but from a national average standpoint, how do we, I mean, we've got to match up pretty good across this country.
Well, yes, absolutely. The national average in terms of rising healthcare cost-
Right.
-is still at nine to 10% annually. So for us to be able to be flat with regard to the post-65 healthcare plan is really, really good. It's good.
That's awesome.
When nationally, it's going up on average, nine to 10% annually.
That's awesome. Good work. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I think Counselor Davis should point that out, because, I mean, it's a volatile industry, and I think our HR staff and this council has done some impressive work on trying to create some, some options to be able to hold these down. For both of those to stay flat, both the employees and the retirees in the same year, I, I think the wellness clinic is, is people that are retiring, that have been taking advantage of that, have a healthier lifestyle, and it, it just, it just holds down the cost and allows us to continue to, to provide adequate coverage to our most valuable asset, and that's our, that's our employees. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we've got an internal audit report on Metro. Ask our auditor to come forward.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm here to present the audit that we've recently completed on Metro. First thing I'd let you, like to let you know about this presentation is that it is extremely long. It's going to be about 45 minutes, and that's if I stop to take a breath. So there is a lot of information, a lot of details. Some of the things I'm going to do, I'm going to not go into so many details in an effort to be considerate of your time. I also want to note that there are some slides with a lot of verbiage on it. Those are generally management responses. Don't knock yourself out reading that, because it is all in your report. As far as the details, all of the details are in your report. And as I go through the presentation, I will point out page numbers where you can find additional information. One last thing is John is going to be presenting the Dial-A-Ride and the parking management portion of the audit. The audit was requested by previous city councilor, Mayor Skip Henderson, and current counselor, Walker Garrett. It was approved by council in August of 2018. We immediately started it in September of 2018, and it was a very comprehensive audit. We went through six or seven areas of the entire operation, fleet maintenance, technology, funding, employment issues, and financial issues. Let's start off by talking about who Metro is. I'm sure that we all know. Metro provides transportation services to the Columbus area with 10 fixed routes Monday through Saturday. They also provide a paratransit service called Dial-A-Ride to our persons with disabilities. After going, after spending a year over at Metro, it was found that action should be taken to immediately stabilize the operation. You might be asking yourself, okay, what are some of the issues that are going on at Metro, and why are we having the decline in operations? It's due to three basic reasons. Number one, we underwent some route changes, which expanded our routes and extended our hours of service, the stability of the current fleet, and the change in management. Now, in response to that, management has wanted to point out something else in regards to our critical vacancies. Generally, when we think of critical vacancies, we've been talking about bus operators and fleet technicians or mechanics. But they wanted to point out that we had critical vacancies or a lot of employment turnover with our staff. Now, I've got three slides here. I'm not going to belabor every single slide or go through it in detail, but what I do want to point out to you is that you see people resigned after 19 years, resigned after 28 years, transferred out of Metro after five years, resigned after 11 years, resigned after 10 years, resigned after 17 years, retired after 20 years, resigned after 11 years. These people were making a career with Metro, and they had a significant amount of experience and knowledge that has walked out of the door. And that has happened since 2016 through 2019. Okay, let's talk about operations a little bit. We talked about route changes being part of some of the issues that we're having at Metro. Let me first explain that we've got 10 routes. Each of those routes are made up of trips, anywhere from 14 to 29 trips per route. The original routes, I'm not quite sure how long the original routes were actually in place, but what we moved from was daily trips of 269 daily trips to 413 daily trips, which is a 54% increase. Our number of miles went from 5,200 to 8,300, which is a 60% increase in the number of miles our vehicles are traveling every day. We realized that maybe that was a little bit too much to bite off and chew, so we backed off in 2018. We took our trips down to 346 and the number of miles down to 7,300. As far as our route start, start times, they remain fairly consistent.
Yes, sir.
And she may get to why you see the fluctuation in hours or miles, and I think you already know, from the T-Splast, there was $22.4 million invested in expanding night service and parking ride and so forth. And so we increased the hours. And then we told you that we're going to analyze those routes on an annual basis, and we're going to adjust them, and, you know, where there's inefficiency, we're going to try and weed it out, because it's important that that money lasts for a lot of years beyond the expiration of the T-Splast. And when it expires, the T-Splast money, and it's gone, it's important that we will not have increased the burden to the taxpayers anymore than we had increased it, anymore than it was prior to receiving these T-Splast dollars. And so that's in our thinking, and it's every year. And I know that we're going to be coming back to you prior to the end of the year, at least in January, to do further adjustments. So I just wanted to, you know, when you see the miles or hours go from this to that and go back down, we started to ratchet back down where there are inefficient routes or bus service. Just wanted to make sure that you know that, why that fluctuation is there.
Thank you.
Okay, so our route's start times remain fairly consistent, but our route finish times have changed quite a bit. Prior to all of the changes, all of our routes finished at 8:30 PM at night. Now our route's finish times start at 8:30 and go into 11:30 at night. We also have 35 additional service hours that we've added to the workday. As I said, there's currently 10 routes. In those 10 routes, there are 183 weekday trips and 163 weekend trips. John and I observed 88 of those day, weekday trips, which is about half of the weekday trips. What we found and what we tested was we looked at vehicle condition, driver competency, total number of passengers per trip, and the highest number of passengers on the vehicle at one time. What we found was that driver competency was fantastic. They were professional, pleasant, they greeted passengers when they were entering and exiting the bus, they helped slow-moving passengers, and they enforced bus rules should they found that they needed to be done, and they were able to do that in a firm, friendly, and professional manner. We did do a driver's license review of 61 driver's licenses. What we were checking was that all drivers must have a CDL or a commercial driver's license with a passenger endorsement, and we checked for the expiration date. Nine of the drivers, we found, did not meet, completely meet the requirements. Some of those were Dial-A-Ride drivers and drivers in the process of obtaining requirements. Management response to that is that before we, an interview is conducted, all drivers must have a CDL with a passenger endorsement. Once they go through some testing, they must pass a road test and a bus pre-trip inspection. Additional findings were that we found, that we observed-
Excuse me, Counselor Thomas?
Would you go back a minute? More. Does that mean that we had nine drivers who did not meet the requirements to drive a bus for the city of Columbus?
They did not either have a CDL license.
Well, and let's be-
Or a passenger endorsement.
It's sort of-
Well, let's, let's be very clear, and I'm going to ask the director to come and respond to that. Make sure you provide all of the information. Would you come and respond to that?
You see my concern?
Absolutely.
This seems to say that there were nine people driving city buses that were not qualified to drive city buses, and I just can't find that hard to believe that we're doing that. And I want to make sure that's not what we're doing.
Good morning, Mayor, council, Mr. City Manager. No, that, that is not the case. The nine people are, as she stated, Dial-A-Ride. These are non-CDL bus operators that drive the little small-
Right.
-paratransit vehicles, regular driver's license, that's all they need. But for CDL, commercial license holders, before we interview a person, they have to already have passed a commercial driver's license test, holding a CDL, whether it's for a tractor-trailer or whatever type vehicle, a CDL. If they're going to drive a bus, there's one, there's a test they have to take, a written test, for passenger to transport people. Before we interview them, they have to go and take that written exam. And then we can hire them. We cannot, we never let them drive by themselves until they go through the city's third-party tester with DOT to complete two additional portions required. And that's the road testing and pre-trip of the bus. So they're in training, and they're riding with operators who have a commercial license, and that's, they can do that. They can even drive with a person with a commercial license, but they cannot-
But, but just to answer the question, the ones who do not have a CDL are Dial-A-Ride drivers?
No, well, they, they have fixed route as well, but they're not driving by themselves.
They're in-
They're in training-
Yes.
-to obtain their CDL.
Absolutely. Because you got to have so much, many driving hours.
Yeah, well, you have to meet the requirements to drive by yourself.
We are following the law.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
That's, that's-
Oh, absolutely. You, you're doing what a person, a 16-year-old, a 15-year-old would do that's got to permit. They can drive in a car with a person with a license, so that's what this person is doing. We have truck drivers, they have a Class A license, but they don't have a passenger to drive a bus. So they go through our program, and once they go through the city's third-party examiner, they complete that last portion for passenger, and then they have the full endorsement, and they can go and drive a bus. But we have never, at Metro, put a person in a driving position for a commercial vehicle that was not fully endorsed.
You've answered the question. I know she has a long presentation. I just wanted to get to the answer.
I think it was just not clear she, this information is, is correct. When they came on board, there were nine people, but to, to explain what nine people, because there were probably seven in Dial-A-Ride.
And I'm glad you asked that question, because people are watching by television.
Yeah.
And they need to be very clear, and that's why I say all of the information has to be presented, because we'll have people going crazy out there. And so I'm happy that you asked that question for clarification.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Counselor Crabbe?
I'm not sure who to direct this to, but there's two forms of, of driver's licenses that are needed. What, so the CDL license, that's to drive the large, the large buses, and then just the people driving the Dial-A-Rides or the smaller buses, I think under 32-passenger or something like that, they can use a regular driver's license?
The state of Georgia says that if you're carrying 16 or more passengers, including the driver, you must have a CDL license. The federal regulation says 15 or more, or more passengers, including the driver. You must have a CDL license with a passenger endorsement. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Well, outside of the federal, state, and federal requirements, that's one thing, but I, I kind of what was just explained, I mean, that's how I read it up here, so I hope there's no confusion on that, because it's just a comparison of the number, out of the 61, and then you have nine that has not met those requirements, which are Dial-A-Ride drivers and drivers in the process of, of obtaining the requirements. So I, I, that's the- So I, I, that's the way I heard it, was the way that City Manager, the way it was just explained. So I hope there's no confusion in that.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to be clear, what, what you're saying is there are two, two distinct license types. One is a CDL, and then one is a CDL with a passenger endorsement. Is that right?
Uh, yes, I guess you could say that. They must have a CDL license with a passenger endorsement.
Okay, so it-
You can have a CDL without a passenger endorsement.
If a truck driver comes in to work with Metro, they would normally have a CDL. Is that right?
From what I understand, based on her response, is that CDL license qualifications before an interview is conducted.
So the, but there's a, a difference in training that requires the, the passenger endorsement?
Correct.
So that, you, you just can't hire a truck driver to come in and drive a bus, even though they probably could, there's, there's a requirement that they-
That's, that's correct.
Yes, sir, and we, and you have trainers in-house-
Yes.
-that train these people to get them to the passing, passenger endorsement. And that's why, when that person is out there and they do not have it, they're in training, and there's a person with that endorsement on the bus with them-
That's correct.
-until they get to that point that they get the passenger endorsement, then they can go on their own.
Okay, but, but the CDL is not required for the smaller vehicles?
She says that, that, yes, the CDL is required.
For the smaller vehicles, no, because it's, it's like twelve seats, that's a regular non-CDL license.
They're talking about dial-a-ride?
Dial-a-ride, that's a paratransit service, non-CDL.
Okay.
Now, you know, and we won't go into all of the, the, into everything, but even with a passenger endorsement, they're different, if it's a larger vehicle, twenty-six thousand pounds or more, there's a, a different passenger endorsement, Class B license. If you're driving a lesser-weight vehicle, you would not require the Class B. So it's dip, but we require a Class B because we're driving vehicles on our fixed route that are twenty-six thousand pounds or more. So once we finish training the person in-house, and they go through about a four-week or more training, then we send them to the city's third-party, well, party tester. But, but in most cases, when we hire people, we try to find persons who have the full endorsement, because it doesn't help us to have to go through additional training and then they don't pass, we can't retain them. But if they come on board with the full endorsement, they complete our four-week training, and then they are able to get on a bus and drive.
So, so you, we are in compliance with the federal-
Oh, absolutely.
-state law.
Oh, yes.
And the federal government come down and audit you every three years.
Yes.
They do what you call a tri-annual review.
Right.
You have never been in violation-
Oh, absolutely.
-in all of the years since I've been at Metro with any of this, okay?
If we did, I'm sorry.
And, and so, are we in violation?
Well, when I did the review, I looked at sixty-one people, and I simply looked if they had a passenger endorsement. I did not know whether they were dial-a-ride drivers or whether they were fixed route drivers. I simply looked at whether they were bus operators.
Okay, how long have you been doing this?
Uh, thirty-one years.
Okay.
And, um, we don't interview a person. If, if we, if we tell them on the phone, "You must pass the written exam before we can interview you," they go and pass the exam, they call us back and say, "I've passed the written exam for passenger endorsement." And the reason we do that is because if we hire them and they don't pass the written exam, they can never make it to the third-party tester to complete the remaining portion. We can't help them with the written exam. They have to do that on their own. We can help them with the driving part through our third-party tester, and we can help them with the pre-tripping of the vehicle, 'cause we have the vehicles. But if they don't study and pass the passenger part, we can't go any further. So that's why we don't even interview them if they haven't passed that written part for passenger. And so that gets them in the door, and then they're able to complete the remaining.
Thank you.
Based on our route observations of doing the bus rides, we found that we encountered a hundred and twenty-five passengers a day on average for, during the routes. Routes three, four, and seven had significantly higher average of passengers, so there's definitely high ridership on those three routes. We encountered a total of sixteen-hundred passengers during our observations, and the highest number of daily passengers per trip was ten at any one time on the bus. I have got some routes here, I've included it in your packet in case you can't see it. These are poorly-supported legs on four of our routes, it's highlighted in yellow. The first one is Route Three, Chetahva Road to Corporate Ridge. As I said, the details are in your packet, and management responses are on page five for each of these parts of the route. Torch Hill Road to Custer Road on Route Four, Route Six, Gateway Walmart to Schaumburg Road, and Route Ten, Airport Walmart to the Social Security Administration. We also found that route times, after reviewing the data with a start time of nine PM or later, had a total of forty-nine passengers with a maximum number of passengers at one time on the vehicle to be five per trip. What our recommendations are is to integrate smaller vehicles into the fleet, to temporarily suspend or discontinue the less-traveled routes, which would be a reduction of about four hundred and thirty-five miles, and to temporarily suspend or discontinue the late-night routes. Management's response to that was that they agreed, there is low ridership after eight-thirty PM. On the lower ridership routes, they employ our trolleys, which have a seating capacity of twenty-three, and it's kinda tough because day-to-day throughout the month, ridership fluctuates. It could be ten riders one day, fifteen the next, and three or four the next day. Management also says that as far as integrating the smaller vehicles, they don't want to make standing the norm, although the vehicles are, are equipped for standing. They also are concerned about the liabilities for falls and fraudulent claims. There is also a concern about the smaller vehicles being able to withstand the number of hours and the number of miles in service. At the end of the day, though, they do agree that smaller vehicles could be an option. Management also says that they agree about discontinuing the routes after eight-thirty, but they are currently working, as the city manager said, with Kinetics, our transportation consultant. They're coming up with different results, and they will be presenting those as they come to light.
You can, just a second. Counselor Woodson?
Can you back, go back to that slide you just left? So there's conversation of probably disconnecting routes at eight-thirty?
That's the recommendation, and it seems as management agrees with that.
And what route is that? Is it any specific route? And my reason for saying that is that I know for a fact, because I have some employees that the bus ro, route doesn't go beyond a certain time.
Mm-hmm.
And they have to get a cab or they have to get Uber in order to go to work. And my concern is that if we continue to cut the hours less and less with the amount of salary that people are making, it's gonna cause another issue in our community. It's hardly enough for people to get to their employee if they don't have a car, because the majority of their salary is going into cabs and Ubers. So in that point right there, I'm a little bit concerned when we're talking cut routes that we already have less routes on.
Well, the original routes, before we started making any changes, all of the finish times were at eight-thirty. There was no service later than that. Now, all ten routes go, start, start stopping at eight-thirty until eleven-thirty. So those are the ones that we're talking about, yes.
Okay, 'cause I do have some concern, because I know for a fact, I know three people for a fact in the area that I work, that unfortunately, you know, they have to ride a Uber or they have to ride a cab, and it takes quite a bit of their, you know, their pay to do that. So just, I'm, I'm just caution, and maybe Isaiah, you and I can talk later about that.
Well, that, that organization, I met with them maybe two weeks ago, and they're going through and scrutinizing every route. And, and so we are, they are gonna come back to this council in the very near future, and it may be near the end of the year, the first of the year, to further adjust routes, because if the route is not productive, if we've got one or two people who, who consistently ride that bus until eleven-thirty and the other times after eight-thirty is making loops, we just can't afford to keep it, because we gotta be focused on getting the routes adjusted to where we know that we can justify the route and the taxpayers' dollars going into providing that service. And so, and, and there again, that twenty-two point four million dollars, I mean, it is not going to last forever, and, and we've gotta have an increase in fare box revenue, we've gotta keep expenses down, and when that twenty-two point four million dollars is gone, I mean, it's, we've gotta make sure that if we started out and Metro had a five million dollar budget before the twenty-two point four million dollars, and it's gone to seven point whatever million after the twenty-two point four million dollars, and if we can't see that we can justify based on increased ridership or usage during those certain hours, when that money is gone, our budget needs to be around five million, considering inflation slightly higher, or we're gonna be asking you and the taxpayers to put more money in the public transit than was there before the twenty-two point four million dollars, when you talk about, when you look at inflation. So, I mean, I'm focused on on making sure that we don't find ourselves, when the money runs out, with route service that's inefficient, and we're riding two or three people in a four-hour span to go to one location, we, we, I, I, we just can't justify it. And so we're gonna come back to you every year as we scrutinize these routes and make adjustments and try and get them to something that we can all be, we can say to the taxpayers, these routes are as efficient as they can possibly be, and we're spending no money than we have to spend on them.
Well, that, you know, that's as it should be, it's gonna, it has to be fluid. I mean, we've got folks on the lower end of the pay scale that have transportation issues. We've got persons with disability that have transportation issues. And I will mention, we've got a lot of councils that wanna, wanna queue up. Just keep in mind, we've got a very lengthy presentation, and in order for us to get through all of that and, and then let our, our, our folks at Metro have an opportunity to address some of these at the end, I think it, as long as we can kinda keep it moving, 'cause it's gonna, it's gonna be a long one, I believe. Counselor Crabbe?
Quick question. Does this twenty-two point four million T-s plots, does it have conditions to it? Can we only spend it in certain areas?
We, we can only spend it on what we told the taxpayers we would spend it on, and that would be to expand routes to night service. We can do some infrastructure thing, I think, like bus shelters up to six hundred thousand, and we can do parking ride. We, and, and obviously, when you expanded the route, you hired additional employees, and as the routes starts to compress or get smaller, if there's not enough demand out there, then, you know, I think they've got twenty-plus bus operator positions open right now, then, you know, it's, it, it, you will be reducing the workforce as you reduce routes and hours. And, and so, we just gotta make sure that we manage it.
Counselor Davis?
I'm really, I, I remember Counselor Allen asked this direct question about the T-s plots, and he's looking at me funny, he doesn't know what I'm about to say, but you, no, he asked that direct question, I remember very vividly, he asked, "When the money runs out, what are we gonna do?" You asked that question, I remember that.
I remember that, too.
I'm glad, I'm glad we're having this conversation.
Yeah.
No, but I think part of that, when we started, didn't we do some studies? We had some studies with consultants on these routes and all, and gave the recommendations. Am I right on that?
We, we went out and you cert, we surveyed, and they identified bus stop locations, where people are going, they did a comprehensive-
That's what I thought.
-study, one that we've not done since the inception of public transit. It afforded us to be able to do it with that money, which I think was good, because we'd never done it. And so now that we've done it, and people say, "We need to go here, we need to go there, we will use it," well, we, we gave you what you asked for. And, and now we need to know that you're gonna use it, and if you're not using it, then it's gonna start to dwindle away until we get to what people actually do use, and that's what I'm focused on.
Well, that, you know, that, you know, action plan comes to my mind, and I'm hearing bits and pieces of it, but I'd like to continue to hear the presentation. I do, I am in full support of, let me just encourage the administration to, to move in the direction, you know, maybe some of these routes, if the happy medium is becoming more efficient, more effective with the vehicles, vehicle size, reducing the carbon footprint with these vehicles, I'm always concerned about that, and making those adjustments. And I, I'd like to encourage the administration to, to do that and, and take those recommendations, you know, 'cause that's, that's gonna help with what we're talking about overall, if that money's, which, in my mind, it's probably not gonna be there, so.
Well, and that's why we gotta review annually and make adjustments annually, so that we don't wake up when the S plots expires and you don't have, you have the twenty-two million anymore, but you got these expenses, and then the service doesn't support what you spent. I'm, I'm redundant, you get my, you hear what I'm saying?
I got you. Thank you, sir.
Lieutenant, continue?
I would like to just interject this. At Metro, we knew early on that after eight-thirty, services were, the ridership was low, prior to the auditors coming on board. They actually came on board and confirmed what we saw coming, but in the initial change that we, that took effect in May, we didn't cut the service back. We wanted to monitor each year to see, instead of just cutting it back to eight-thirty and then come back to you, but we saw the numbers after eight-thirty, a year or so ago, over a year ago.
Thank you.
But they actually came in and rolled, in fact, all of our staff. We personally went out and rolled buses after eight-thirty to see what the ridership, so we agree that after eight-thirty, if the ridership is-
Okay, now we wanna talk about fleet maintenance. I wanna explain a little bit that all of our vehicles are what's on the, are considered fixed assets, and they are on the fixed asset list that I worked with as of July two thousand and nineteen. Basically, when you have a fixed asset, you assign it a useful life. So if you have a piece of equipment and you assign it a useful life of five years, what you can expect is performance of that piece of equipment at a high performance. You can expect it to operate as it was sold to operate with minimal maintenance cost, as long as you are not abusing the, the product. After its useful life, you generally can continue to use the equipment, but you have to expect more attention and probably increased maintenance cost. Wanted to talk a little bit, I've got some very specific information in your reports that start on pages, page seven, but I wanted to let you know that the cost of the vehicles at Metro, it's not just the purchase price. You're looking at the vehicle cost, and then you have approximately thirty-eight thousand to forty thousand dollars in add-ons. Security cameras, fare boxes, announcement systems, two-way radios, and bike racks. Currently, we have eighteen diesel buses, five of these buses are out of service. You could see the purchase price was four hundred and twenty thousand, then you have got the add-ons, the total ending price is four hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Not all of our eighteen buses cost that much, this is the most current purchase price of this type of bus. We have seven trolleys for a total price of four-
Ms. Mayor, I, I just, I, I need to interject to, just because people are watching, to, to say- to say now, that's the total cost, and then there's a federal share towards the cost of that bus.
We have been paying, the funding for those 18 buses went through 14 of them, the FTA helped us with 80%, and the American Recovery Reinvestment Act.
That's the point, I want those watching by television to know that it's a $480,000 bus, 80% of that, the cost of that bus comes from the federal government. And, and so, the, the local taxpayers would-
I'll cover that on each section.
Okay, okay. Well, I, I just, before you leave there, if you leave that and someone's watching and they're watching-
Now, there's another vehicles, but I'll go through and explain that on each vehicle.
Okay.
We have seven trolleys, four of them were paid with FTA funds, three of them were paid with the American Recovery and Reinvestment Funds. Out of those seven trolleys, one is not used for daily routes, it's used for special occasions like a wedding, and one is out of service. We have nine hybrids, four of them were paid for with the T-Splot, or TIA, one was paid from FTA funds, and four others were paid for with clean fuels. We have nine of these for a total price of $571,000. We currently have $14 ride vehicles, they were all paid for with FTA funds, $143,000. Out of those 14, six are currently out of service. So, we have 12 out-of-service vehicles at this point in time. Metro management's response is that seven of those buses are going to be placed on the auction this Saturday. When we were looking at maintenance, we reviewed the condition of the fleet and we conducted employee interviews. What we found, that 50% of the vehicles had interior lighting that was not completely functioning, 40% of the vehicles had broken or cracked windows, and 41% of the vehicles had security cameras that were not functioning. Management's response to that is some of the lighting is out intentionally for bus operator comfort, others is going to be repaired soon. And the van, the cracked windows and the cracked mirrors are due to vandalism, and they have touched base with the Columbus Police Department for those acts of vandalism.
May I say, it's not operator comfort, it's safety. In the very front of the vehicle, there's a glare that will go onto the windshield, that will prevent the operator from being able to see when it's dark, customers standing at bus stops. So, we either remove the two front lights, or we purchase the bus with blue lights, and I put that in my report. It's not comfort, it's safety, and bus operators will complain if there's too much glare. But in terms of other lights that go out, these fluorescent lights are routinely replaced. So, that we could put some on a bus today, and tomorrow, they'll be out on another bus. So, maintenance are making sure that those lights are, are replaced on there. But I just want to mention, it's, it's, some of the lights in the front, they're out, you know, that's by design.
Thank you.
I do want to touch base on our hybrid buses. We have nine of those hybrid vehicles. We have to have 18 vehicles in order to run a daily service. So, the hybrid buses account for 50% of our daily vehicle needs. Let me explain a little bit about what a hybrid bus is. A passenger vehicle, an average passenger vehicle has approximately 13 volts. An average bus has approximately 28 volts. The hybrid vehicles have your 28 volts for your cranking system, plus an additional 600 volts. The hybrid buses have what's called battery packs. You'll notice that there's a little bit of a top that's a little higher than the average bus, that's where your battery packs are. Each bus has 16 battery packs. They cost $2,500 each for a total of $40,000 per vehicle. They have a, an expected life of five to seven years. So, for the five vehicles purchased in 2013, we can expect, or reasonably expect, a maintenance cost of $200,000 coming due in 2018 through 2020. In 2016, we purchased four of those buses, and we can reasonably expect $160,000 in maintenance costs for those battery packs between 2021 and 2023. I wanted to also mention that Metro is not certified to work on these buses because of the voltage. What we have to do is there are mechanics in New York State that come, that need to come and work on those buses, but rather than do that to save on maintenance cost, we wait until those mechanics have gone to a facility in Anniston, Alabama, and then we ask them to come over to Metro to work on our vehicles. So, we've skirted a lot of maintenance cost, but we have instead had quite a bit of downtime with these vehicles. Two in particular, we've got bus number 1222, it's six and a half years damp, it's six and a half years old, it was technically down for one year, but if you take a look at mechanical issues and the number of miles that it actually traveled, it was essentially down for a year and a half. It needed a $25,000 part. We have another hybrid, bus number 1304, it's three years old, it has been down since December 2018, it needed a $57,000 part. Management's responses to that is bus 1222 was recently repaired, but now unfortunately, it's down again due to electrical problems, but is expected to be up later this month. Bus 1304, luckily, we did receive a part for free for $57,000, they were at no cost to the city, and it's back in daily service. The remaining fleet outside of the hybrids are our diesel buses and trolleys, they're approximately seven and a half years old. We have two of the oldest veh, the, two vehicles in our fleet that are the oldest are bus 1211, which is 11 years old, and bus 1202, which is 14 years old, and those are both diesel buses. When you speak with the fleet technicians, what they talk about routinely is the number of spares they have. If a bus breaks down and needs mechanical issues, it's great as long as they have a spare to call on. The FTA defines the spare ratio that you should have on hand as 20% of your daily vehicle needs. We need 18 vehicles every day, so 20% of that is for vehicles for spares. Now, when I went to the FTA website on the frequently asked questions, it says, "If experimental technology is being purchased, such as hybrid electric buses, can the spare ratio be exceeded? Since the new technology is still, still experimental, and we expect these buses will break down more frequently, can we compensate for that by having five extra spares?" So, right there, we can see that our hybrid buses are a very unstable vehicle, it's not a Metro, necessarily a Metro issue, it is a nationwide problem, those vehicles. Moving on to maintenance cost, in 2013, our maintenance costs were $375,000. In 2019, our maintenance costs were $842,000. This is a 125% increase. But there are four reasons for this, the increased mileage of the new, with the new routes, the hybrid vehicles and their instability, the reliance on our older vehicles, and the use of outside maintenance technicians. Manage, management's response to that was basically the same, is that we're using outside technicians and the age of our fleet. When speaking with fleet technicians, we found that the number one priority was getting the vehicles back on the road. When we asked them about their hurdles, it was the extended hours means less time to diagnose and complete work on the vehicles. They come in at 12 midnight, and they have until 4:00 AM before they have to start cranking the vehicles for them to go out on routes again the next day. The, the lack of spare buses and the critical vacancies as far as having to send a bus off to be fixed, or having outside technicians come in. The recommendations, we can, we need to start addressing the mechanics or the fleet technician shortage, that is a nationwide situation. In your report, I noted that AutoNation, one of our largest car dealerships in the nation, has said that we've, we're experiencing a shortage, that no one's coming into this field. So, one of the ideas might be the Mayor's Commission on Reentry, maybe work with another institution here in town and have inmates that are being released, get training, and come and work at Metro as a mechanic. Would definitely help our community. And management does agree that they are not going to be buying any more hybrid vehicles. They also utilize the Soldier for Life Transition Assistance Program and the City Felons Committee as far as hiring. We moved from the fleet on to facilities maintenance. There are four buildings out on Metro's property. You've got the Administration Building, Transfer Center, the Lower Shop, and the Main Shop. The Lower Shop is where all of the end-of-day cleanup and refueling of the vehicles occurs. This is where our community service workers work, they clean the inside of the, and the outside of the buses, they are extremely valuable to the operation, and they do a very good job at what they're helping us do. The hours of service of this particular shop is 4:30 PM to 12:00 midnight. This is a photograph of what the Lower Shop looks like, this is the mechanic's pit, it's approximately four feet deep, not quite sure how long it is, maybe, maybe 50 feet, I, I'm not good with that, but maybe 50 feet. And what happens is a bus drives in over that, and the fluid service and everything that they have to do is on the back end of the bus. So, the fleet technicians are working on those planks right there. Now, what you've got is a huge safety concern. The buses have just been rinsed down, washed, soaked up, they come in, they're wet and dripping, then you've got oil, grease, and all kinds of fluids on the floor. It becomes a, quite a safety concern. We had someone, one of the workers in 2018 fell off of one of these planks, he lost six teeth and had to have 20 stitches across his chin. So, it's definitely a safety concern that we need to take into account. Management's response is that safety is a major concern, that netting has been purchased, and we're awaiting its installation now, and that the area is always kept clean. This is kind of an example of, of the netting that we're talking about. So, if anyone was to fall, they would be caught rather than hitting the floor. The findings in the Lower Shop found that as the buses come in, they're what's called probed, they have got a wand that they can stick on the fare box, and the revenue, what's holding the revenue or cash collections for the day comes out. There's absolutely no way that anyone could get into that cash or access it, but what they do is they then move and turn to a main vault that is just a couple of steps from the bus. That vault is inoperable, and they're having to use an inconveniently located vault that takes a little more time to get to. The soap dispenser on the car wash is not working, the oil tank sprays oil on the floor, covering the floor, the remote control on the security gates entering and exiting the property does not work, fueling stations are not secured, pump number one gas nozzle is leaking fuel, the intercom system linking the dispatch center in the Lower Shop is inoperable, and 40% of the lighting is not functioning. And when I talk about the lighting, I'm talking about inside the building, the outside of the building, and in the pits where the mechanics work. Moving to the Main Shop-
Excuse me, would you give them our response?
Sure. I, I noted on here that their responses, I was going to do that in just a couple of minutes. The responses to all of these are on page 15. Because there are quite a bit of responses to each of these pieces of equipment, I wanted to note that to you rather than cover it in the presentation. Moving on to the Main Shop, this is where more advanced mechanical work is done here. What we found was that the water fountain was inoperable, 50% of the light bulbs were not functioning inside the building, outside the building, in the mechanic's pits, and in the parking lots. And there was equipment that was in need of replacement. We've got some floor jacks, one floor jack that was purchased in 1994 for $24,000. It was assigned a five-year life, it is currently 25 years old. There are four platform lifts that were purchased in 2003 for a total of $25,000. They have a 10-year life and are now 16 years old. Our recommendations are that all equipment must be made operational, the fixed asset listing needs to be closely managed, and safety should become a primary concern. It is recommended that no community service workers go into the Lower Shop garage area where the pit is because of the slippery floors and the pit itself, that they should remain outside doing the work on the buses. Lighting must be maintained, and we need to get that netting for the mechanic's pits.
I know that you say it's in here, but for those who are listing, listening, I think they, you know, some of these I need to address. Water fountain, there are two water fountains in the area that Ms. Barfield is speaking of. One of the water fountains, I mean, most of the mechanics probably didn't even know it was there. The one that's always worked sits next to an ice machine that they use on a daily basis. So, I guess when they discovered the one that wasn't working, they put in a work order, it is now working. It, it has a low flow to it, but it's working. But they, I want to make it clear, it's not that they didn't have a water fountain, it, there was just two of them, and one was not working. And as far as lights in the area, when the mechanics are working and they let the maintenance manager know lights are out, again, these are lights that are changed on a routine basis, they're not always out, they're, they're changed routinely. In terms of community service workers, we use them, we need them, we're short-staffed. They do a lot of work that our maintenance people won't have to do, like cleaning buses, cleaning the floors, cleaning the transfer center. Where customers come in, we want them to come in every morning with, into a clean area. So, I agree that they shouldn't be in the Bay Area, and I believe the maintenance manager makes sure that they are not in that area. But in terms of using them, they save the city a lot of money to use community service workers.
Again, if you look in your audit report on page 15, Rose is correct, there are management responses to all of those pieces of equipment about where they are as far as in the repair cycle.
And I think the, the point that I was trying to make earlier and that she's trying to make, you know, because we know people are watching by television, if you present the problem and not the response, then, you know, people out there, I, I can imagine, and I know you can too, that social media will just-
Oh, certainly.
You know, and so-
Certainly.
And so, there needs to be balance, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I really and truly had concerns about spending time speaking about this and going on and on, so I was trying to be sure that I told everyone where the information was located, rather than goes through each individual thing. So, I apologize for that, and in the future, I will consider that.
But I think, I think we, it, it's hard, you know, it's, it's hard to, to present an audit findings in a, in a, we're a very transparent government, and we want to do it televised, so that the public sees what we're doing. So, it does make it difficult. I know in almost every audit report we've had, we do encounter some of this, where, where, you know, the timing of it is as we go through there, we, we do touch on it, but there may be some things that the, the manager or the department head is a little bit passionate about in that area and wants to get out there. So, you know, I think it's great that Ms. Evans is having an opportunity to touch on things that she thinks may be a, a particular instance, but I don't see this taking any different process than we have in the past, it just seems to be a more lengthy, because it's a larger organization that touches more diff, more people and provides different functions. It, it's just very detailed and very, very, very voluminous, so, so I, I don't think there's any intent on the part of the auditor to-
Well, I, I don't either, Mayor, I just, you know, wanted to, because I know either it's going to get answered now, or you're going to get something on social media, and she's going to spend the 30, 40 hours trying to provide you a response to tell your constituents on social media, and we could just say- "Go look at the video."
Right. I got it.
Now, we're gonna move to technology, funding, internal processing controls. This is basically the administration of the operation. Metro has got two main software systems. One is called Shopfax, and one is called Genfair. Shopfax is an all-encompassing management tool for fleet management. What you're gonna find in that software is all of the information for each individual vehicle. It's gonna be purchase price, VIN number, all of the repairs and maintenance that have been done on that vehicle. It should just be a complete profile. Inventory information is always, is also kept in this particular software. Maintenance information in Shopfax was found to be accurate. Inventory information was found to be accurate. The employees are proficient with their use of handhelds. This software uses barcode, so anytime something's retrieved from inventory, it's all scanned with the work orders. Employees are proficient at entering their work orders, but they are struggling with computer processes. What we found was that Shopfax has an interface with the financial advantage system, but it is set up to, it is set up incorrectly. So what that means is that shop personnel has to go in and manually edit that interface, which in accounting, that should be a prohibited practice. You should never change information from a control system going into a financial system. Documentation is maintained but redundant. Inventory is not managed by Shopfax, and manual record-keeping is being done outside of the system. For example, if I wanna go in and find out how often a vehicle has been down, I can't find that information in Shopfax, and the mileage in the system is not accurate. When looking at Metro's inventory, they have approximately $235,000 in inventory, but they have $78,000 in obsolete inventory. That consists of parts not used since 2008, and for any vehicles that are no longer in service with us. Something that could be considered a recommendation would be to auction off some of this old equipment in the auction that we're having on Saturday. The remaining that's inventory that is not sold could be sold back in a vendor buyback program. I've talked with a vendor. We could set up an agreement that we would have credit on hand to use in the future. We also have a NAPA satellite location in Public Works that they use and seem to be very pleased with. That's another option for our shop area at Metro. We do not own that inventory. Metro keeps it on hand based on what our needs are gonna be for the upcoming year. Using this could help us avoid unnecessary shipping costs, 'cause it seems like when I was there at Metro, I observed a lot of parts that we needed to order and have as soon as possible. The recommendations are that we need some comprehensive training of the system and its capabilities. The management module needs to be purchased and utilized. Basically, we are using Shopfax as just a data entry place where we try to get bills paid. We are not using it to manage the fleet.
I just wanted to say, the Shopfax has been in place a lot longer than, you know, I can tell you. The person who was most familiar with using it had twenty-eight years of experience in the maintenance division, and she resigned her position in 2017. The person who has been using it for the last seven years worked beside her. So I don't really know if they're using all of what the program offers, but I know that they are the most familiar with the system. And we've never had any, they've never expressed any concerns with using it. And if, you know, there are programs out there that you could do a whole lot with, but if you don't use them and you don't need them, you may not use them. So it is something that we're going to look further into to see how we can better use Shopfax, but we have not been informed of any problems with it through our finance department or even the staff who are most familiar with using it.
I don't think that there are any problems with Shopfax. It's a great piece of software. I just think that it's not being utilized completely. Rosa mentioned that someone had been there for twenty-eight years, and they resigned in 2017, and the other person has been there in that position for seven years, actually with Metro for eleven years, and they have recently resigned as well. She also mentioned that people were gonna be, new employees would be trained on Shopfax.
Yes. The person that's, that was using it for seven years worked under the person who was there for twenty-eight years with Shopfax. He was there for eleven years as a mechanic, but he's been working directly with Shopfax for seven years. And so he did resign his position for better pay. He said he just could not pay his school tuition and take care of his family with what he was making, so he got a better opportunity for pay. So, but prior to him leaving, because we're trying to cross-train our staff, the limited staff we have, we're trying to cross-train people. We already had someone going down to, as they could, as, you know, time permitted, for them to learn it. So that person was able to step right in, and she's learning Shopfax, and she's doing a good job already.
Moving from Shopfax to Genfair. Genfair is a software system that collects statistical information for the entire operation. It is, I may be going out on a limb by saying it's the heart of operations at Metro, but it collects ridership statistics, route information and statistics, driver information and statistics, and daily revenue information. So basically, what I'm saying is that we should be able to get information from Genfair and manage our operation based on that information. What I found by looking at our Genfair things is that trip information, remember I said we had ten routes? Those are in Genfair, but all of the trips, which is 183 weekday and 163 weekend, those trips are not in Genfair. So we're missing out on quite a bit of valuable information as far as knowing what stops our passengers are getting on and off at, what kind of passengers we have, whether they be senior citizens or children. There's just a lot of valuable information that we're not getting from Genfair that we could be. What I was told is that the drivers are not completely trained to use the fare boxes correctly with trip information. And kinetics, our transportation consultants are relying on manual sheets that are kept by the bus operators. Seventy-seven percent of our drivers were entered into the Genfair system. Revenue amounts generated by the software do not reconcile with actual revenue being counted. In speaking with a Genfair representative, we were told that a one percent variance is found to be acceptable. We might not get it right. The dollar bills may be crinkled up or something of that manner. But when we looked at six months, we found three months, the variances were less than one percent, but three months were over a one percent variance. Management response to that is that managers review the daily reports. Discrepancies occur when fare boxes are not used correctly, and that we're using the same processes that we have in the past and that they've always been effective.
Sure. Thank you so much. In terms of Genfair, it is the brain of the organization, and there's so much that Genfair can provide transit systems. And not every transit system uses all of the data. At Metro, we are currently using all of what we've always used. There's nothing different. And so while, you know, I don't want it to seem like the system is not effective. It is very effective, but there are always gonna be some glitches with it. We do get data for how many seniors that ride, persons with disabilities, persons in wheelchairs, students, regular adults. We get all of that data. If they're using a swipe card, a fifteen-day card, a thirty-one-day card, a three-week card, that data is there. It is not uncommon for a transit system to use manual surveys. They do it across the country. We've always done it. Because Genfair does not show you stop-by-stop. It gives you total ridership, but it doesn't tell you where a person get on or off a bus. That is why myself and my staff ride, we go and ride random trips, and just last weekend, I rode, to ask the customer, "Is this a work trip, or is it leisure? Are you coming from, you know, the mall?" Because we need to know stop-by-stop, and that is something that Genfair can't do. It's just not there. It's not set up. The equipment is not set up for that. So in terms of operator errors, yes. We monitor that. Operators may put the wrong, and we call them blocks. If there are three buses out there on the same route, you got block one, two, and three. So Columbus South is one, Route Seven, three buses on there. So when operators switch shifts, the route is there in the fare box already programmed. So maybe the wrong block gets put in, but that ridership still goes to that route. It still goes to that route because the right, the correct route is there. So I wanna make that very clear. The information may be skewed just a little bit, and that one percent she spoke about, that is correct. You can expect that. And in terms of the revenue, I talked with Genfair just on yesterday to make sure, what are some of the ways that today the revenue is $100 over what we got out of the vault versus the data report tomorrow is $200 under? And so what they informed me was it could be a number of reasons, and I'll try to speed this up. If a bus is probed, as she stated earlier, whether you probe it to download the data, if for some reason the mechanic does not pull the box out, and that very seldom happens, it got probed, but the money didn't get dumped. So the next time that bus is probed, the money is there. It didn't go anywhere. It's in that container, and it goes over. Or if there's a roll call, and the bus goes directly from the route to the garage, and that bus sits in the garage and is down for a week or month or what have you, sometimes that data is lost. So when you do get that bus up and running and you probe it, so it's always been, as long as I've been at Metro and my predecessors as well, it's going to be a plus or minus. There's no fraudulent activity. No one can see or touch the money. So that's something that every transit system has experienced.
And just quickly, if I could touch, I had Jenfear when I was Metro Director, and she made a very good point when you, no one ever can see or touch the money, not the driver. It's a box that you pull, pull out of the fare box. It's locked, and you put it into a bin, and you can turn the handle if it's in the bin, and the money drops into a vault. And then you let the handle back up, and you can pull the box back out, and you can put it back into the fare box. So you never see or touch money. Now, that Genfair fare box, when you put your coins or dollar bills or swipe a card, it tells you how many pennies you collected that day, how many nickels, dimes, quarters, fifty cents, whatever you put in there. There's a printout that's generated once you put it in there to go, it sends it to the database, and they print that out, and that box counts the money and tells you how much you should have for that day. That printout should match what that box down there tells you. And if there's a variance, then you need to find out why is there a variance? And I think she was explaining, if a bus broke down and they towed it into the garage and they didn't fix it and it sat there for two days and they didn't pull the fare box out to dump the money, then... Oh, they showed it, I'm sorry. So, but anyway, I wanted you to know that there's a reason for the variance and that they never see or touch money, so it's unlikely anyone can steal money in that system unless they know how to break open a box, steal a box and put it back together. But they never see or touch the money, and then, of course, Brinks or whomever will come in, and they take it, I shouldn't tell you all this, to the bank, and the bank is gonna send you an invoice, and your invoice must match your computer printout, and that must match what came out in that box. And so you've got checks and balances, just so you know there's a system.
And if you could quickly show that first slide again for me, Robert, please? And I'll go to quick. This is step one. The mechanic gets on, and he's probing. He has a little device, and it is uploading the data of all the transactions for that day. He's pulling the box out. Step two, getting ready to replace a new box in, container. Step three, please? And here, he's putting it in and locking it back, still no access to the money. Go to the next one, please. So then he goes into the room that she spoke of earlier, and we'll show you here in a minute, the outside dump that we have. This one works fine. It was one that's been at Metro forever and ever. It's a manual dump, no problems. We did have to get a crank, the crank repaired on it once, but it has been our backup dump, and it works. And I know she's probably gonna talk in a minute about the one on the outside, and you've already covered that, right? Okay. So he goes into the vault area, puts it in, he turns a crank there at step two, closes the door and turns it. The other, there's another part in this dump that has a little sensor on it. When they turn that crank, if it's, the timing is not right, some of the money may not dump out of that box. Some of it may not, but they don't know that. So when they put it back on another bus, some of the money is still in there, but it goes into the vault the next time it's dumped. So it's very sensitive, but it's an older piece of equipment. The process has never been broken. The dump, if you'll go to the one on the outside, do you have that one? I think Ms. Barfield spoke about, yes. This one is the one that we're in the process right now of working with Genfair to get repaired. When that bus pulls up right there where you see this on the left side, the maintenance person, once they probe the bus and get the data, they take it over to this wall dump, which is probably not even ten feet, and dump it. The one that you just saw that's on the inside is just on the other side of that building, a few extra feet that they're all accustomed to. So while we're waiting on this piece of equipment, and it's been just painstaking trying to get it because that one had no electricity. We've had it for over ten years, and it's worked fine. When it went down, Genfair sent us another one, but the one they sent had needed power source to it, and they didn't realize that. And then they finally told us they don't make this manual kind anymore. So that's where we are. Public Works came out, installed the power source that you see, and our IT department are gonna work with us when we get the cable. There's another piece of equipment that goes with this, so it's not as simple as it seems because that one is a manual with no electricity. The new one has it. So it's just a matter of us making sure we get all of the parts that go with it, and they'll be able to go back to this one. But as, you know, nothing has changed. The money is still being processed, the lighting.
All right. Let's keep moving. We're gonna get into day three of this pretty soon.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
I've still got quite a ways to go. I apologize.
That's okay.
The recommendations are that we have two administrators for Genfair, one from the planning area and one from operations, because they both have different job responsibilities. They can help each other and make sure that the information that is in Genfair is up-to-date and current. They also, as far as training, to understand what the reports are telling them so that if they have messages or error messages that are being generated, they can be addressed. Okay, let's move past the software. We're gonna talk a little bit about funding. I know you had a conversation early on in the presentation about funding. There are three funding agencies. If you look on page twenty in your audit report, we go into quite a few specifics there as far as the matches and how much is apportioned to us on an annual basis. The three funding agencies are the Federal Transit Administration, the FTA, the Georgia Department of Transportation, GDOT, and the Transportation Investment Act of 2010, which is called TIA, but you're probably more familiar with calling it the TSPLOST. which is called TIA, but you're probably more familiar with calling it the TSPLOST. The planning area that's located at Metro is responsible for submitting the grant applications on an annual basis. They're also responsible for submitting invoices for reimbursements to the various agencies. And all of the employment, all of the employees in this area have less than two years of experience. What we found was that there was no formal plan in place as far as doing the submissions of grant applications or reimbursement request. It, it seemed as if, uh, management was struggling with managing multiple priorities. Documentation, documentation supporting, uh, application submission was asked for, but very hard to obtain. Reimbursements as far as expenses that we had already incurred were not submitted timely. It was an average of three months after the period had closed before we submitted expenses. That was in 2018. For 2019, no expenses were submitted at all, uh, because the grant submission had not taken place until just recently. And we had approximately $2 million that we have not gotten back in reimbursements for the year. From what I understand now, that those submissions have been done. Uh, one more thing, uh, the fourth quarter of 2018 reimbursements did not reconcile with finance.
And, and I'll let Finance speak to any portions of that. But in terms of the reimbursement and grant submission in 2018, I just want to list a, uh, eight, 2018 for Metro was brutal. It, it was a tough year for us and I can name, tell you a few reasons. We had, um, the transit study that was being conducted where the routes, it actually started in latter part of 2017 and routes were changed in May of 2018. So we were working with the consultants, public meetings, took up a lot of staff time. Parking, our parking, uh, was transferred to Metro in-house where we used to handle it at the River Center Garage. People went there to pay their tickets. There was always a supervisor there to, to wait on the customer. Well, that process changed and it moved in-house. So staff, we had to use additional staff to, to help with that. And of course, parking eventually went to part-time and that office at the River Center Garage was closed down for business. Uh, the triennial review, we had our triennial review that same year. Started the end of December where FTA said, "Your review is coming up in August of 2018. We need all of this data." So staff working where they would have been working on the, uh, FTA grant application, we were all with new staff learning, working to pull this information together to prepare for an audit with FTA in August. Uh, and during this process, the, the person who, and our planning manager, who we, we, who was most familiar with everything, had gone to all the training, uh, resigned her position. So we were trying to get everybody acclimated with what we needed to do who had not gone to training. Uh, the city's budget was due. So we're working on the city's budget as well as FTA trying to get our grant application process. Transition audit came on board a little bit later, September. Uh, you know, during this time, uh, community, we had a lot of other things that we never stopped doing for our citizens. Communities motions, on the table, annual staff meetings, uh, Public Recognition Service Week. The government shut down. So by the time we did get our applications submitted before the cutoff, after the cutoff of September, the government shut down in December. So that prolonged the approval process. And FTA has about five or six different, uh, committees that have to review the grant application with legal, DOL, and all the different agencies. So there's never been an issue with FTA. I want to say that. Uh, they work closely with their grantees. And we, uh, we have, um, forget what it's called, may have to ask one of our, um, planners to tell me where we are able to use our money and then FTA reimburses. It's never been a problem. Pre-award authority, never been a problem. And so while we know it's important to do these grants and applications on time so that this money, this city can be reimbursed, these were extenuating circumstances that prevented us. And, uh, we faced some of the same challenges. We, we've submitted the grant this year, but it's still going through FTA, FTA's approval process. So I just wanted to say there were some mitigating factors in 2018. And the triennial review audit, you know, they were only here a couple of days, but they gave us eight months to correct our findings. So, you know, it took a lot of time, a lot of work to try to correct those findings and staff worked heavily. They worked heavily involved, I think Finance wants to say so.
You don't have to say anything.
Okay, good morning. Well, she just asked me to comment on the funding. Um, and just as of the, uh, 14th of August, we did receive the $2 million that we were waiting on for FY19 expenditures for Metro. So I just wanted to, to point that out. And then as far as some of the, um, reconcile, reconciling items with the fourth quarter, um, for years, I believe Metro has, um, what they term as a fifth quarter process to go back and reconcile what may have not been, um, uh, reconciled for the fourth quarter. And some of the, the reconciling, uh, items relate to purchasing card transactions. You know, um, when you purchase something on a purchasing card, it does take a, a bit of time for it to actually post to, um, the budget. Um, and what the grant accountant does in the finance department is he records all the, all the expenditures as they are posted. And Metro may have, um, recorded that expense as they incurred it. So, um, I just wanted to make mention of that as far as the reconciling.
So are we current on all federal monies?
Yes, we're current through, uh...
They reimburse us for everything that's due in...
Everything that was due up through the end of GIN.
Okay, thanks.
Um, continuing with the findings, no funding reconciliation is present. What I mean by that is there's not one particular place that you can go and find out how much money we have available from an agency, how much we've submitted for reimbursements, how much we're planning to submit for reimbursements, or if any reimbursements are pending, or what our available balances are. Um, there were some inaccuracies, uh, some duplicate submission of expenses to different agencies. We have, have incorrect submission of some payroll expenses with 5303, which is, uh, part of an FTA funding. Uh, in 5307, some payroll expenses are being incorrectly submitted. The recommendations there are that the planning area must be actively managed. Application submission and reimbursement processes should be given a higher priority and documentation must support app, grant applications and reimbursement requests. I think my battery's going dead here. Employees need management involvement, computer training, and it would be very helpful to have an annual, quarterly, and monthly schedules. Improved communications with finance and inaccuracies should be addressed. Um, I think Rosa has already given some of her, um, explanations. We've talked about this. Uh, there's a staff person that is monitoring the parking garages and they're paid by TSPLOST. I'm not quite sure that we're talking about the same thing. I'm talking about a sworn correctional officer. And, um, she says that Metro meets all of the deadlines set by council.
Let me, let's speak to that. The person who manages the parking garages?
Yeah, let's, let's do this. We've, Ms. Evans, I appreciate...
He's not a sworn officer, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that. And I, and I appreciate that, but I think, I think this is getting a little wrapped around the axle. In the past, we've gone through the audit and then the department head will make notes and then gets the last word, comes up and, and talks. Now, I, I think we've, we've dragged this out a little bit unnecessarily. If we just get through the audit, go through the slides, and then we'll have Ms. Evans come up and, and you make any, any, uh, comments that, that you want. I know I've gotten some information from several counselors around the table that we need to try to get this...
But please note that 10 days after we give the audit, uh, report to the response to the Metro management, they had 10 days to respond. All of the responses should already be in your report.
Yes, ma'am. But I, but I do agree with the city manager. I think it's important that we get some of these responses aired publicly just so that there's no, no...
Hey Columbus, Georgia, it's your girl, Sophie Black. And I'm coming to your city on August 1st.
So if we could, just go ahead and continue.
Okay, I'll talk very quickly and I apologize.
No, you're fine. We don't want to rush through it, but I just want you to...
Um, internal processes, processes and controls, uh, internal processes and controls are in place. Examples of what I'm talking about is cash is counted daily and under dual control. Reconciliation of balancing, cash is kept. Bus operators perform, uh, walkarounds prior to starting routes. Daily maintenance forms are kept by bus operators. The thing is, is that although we are doing those internal controls and processes, there's not any follow-up if the internal control notes a problem. For example, cash balances are not identified and resolved. Diesel tanks are not secured and are accessible for use at all times. Cash reconciliation differences, we talked about the 1% variance being acceptable, uh, but anything above that needs to be identified and resolved. I did not see that that happened. Accounting differences between finance and planning are not identified and resolved either. I believe that we should continue using the internal processes that are in place. Implementing set routines, doing everything the same time of day will help reduce a lot of the out, out of balance issues. And when something is out of balance, it should be easily identified. Diesel tanks should be locked and any refueling outside of normal hours should be documented. And system, system, uh, system-generated reports, uh, should be watched and monitored. I'm going to skip the audit responses since Rosa will have an opportunity to talk and go straight on to employment. Generally, when we talk about, uh, uh, Metro, we talk about the critical vacancies and what we're speaking of are bus operators and fleet technicians. Um, so that's basically what I've focused on here. Critical vacancies for bus op, operators right now, as of August 19th. We have 17 full-time and two part-time bus operator positions available. We have three maintenance techs available. This is a look at Metro overall as far as their turnover. Let's look at bus operators. We have 57 authorized bus operators. In 2017, Metro employed 95 candidates with 32 separating employment. In 2018, Metro employed 97 candidates with 39 separating employment. In 19, they employed 78 candidates with 26 separating employment. Over three years, they employed 270 bus operators for 97 of them to leave. That's a 36% turnover rate. And one thing that we're not considering is the strain that this has placed on the Human Resource Department. Another issue that I looked at, we're talking about why are we having the turnover? Uh, this is a fourth quarter snapshot of overtime for our bus operators. Uh, notice that this is not pay periods as it goes across, it is weeks. So you've got 12 weeks here in the fourth quarter. These are the top 10 overtime earners for 2019. During the third and fourth quarter, which the third quarter is not shown here, nine operators had 12 consecutive weeks of overtime, anywhere from six to 20 hours. In the fourth quarter, the four operators that are highlighted had 11 of 12 weeks of overtime averaging 18 hours. So please keep in mind that this is in addition to 40 hours a week. In speaking with operations in the maintenance area, employees have not been told that they cannot take personal time, but they felt that they were unable to take personal time. So what happens is when you reach a certain level, your time goes into catastrophic time, which is no longer available to the employee. Um, nine, in fiscal year 2018, nine employees lost earned vacation time. Six of those individuals are no longer, uh, employed by CCG. Wanted to talk about pay. I know that that's an issue that has been talked about time and time again, but it has been, uh, a reason for the turnover, an explanation of some of the turnover. What I'd like to point out to you, uh, this is a snapshot of actual payroll documentation. Uh, these are 17 employees that I just picked off of payroll. They are bus operators. You can see in the second column, that is the date of employment. The next column over is time on the job and the third is their rate of pay. You can see that employee number three has worked 11 years giving Metro service. Employee 17 has worked, maybe that's two months. They're making the same rate of pay as someone that has been there for 11 years. In addition to that, we have a mandatory pension contribution. You can see that at some point it's .62. That is because they have a 4% mandatory contribution. The dollar 23 is the 8% mandatory contribution. So that definitely affects your hourly rate. Uh, I totally agree that people need to be saving for retirement and the pension is extremely important, but to voluntarily, you may not find employees that, uh, can do an 8% contribution. This is the same thing for the fleet technicians. I've got some recommendations about the vacation time that was lost. Uh, there are only three remaining employees that fall under that, uh, that lost the time at this point. One of them is our Metro Director, um, but maybe that catastrophic time should be returned back to those employees. Training should be conducted by the CCG Public Safety Coordinator that's located in Public Works because at this point we're not doing annual evaluations, annual driver training or refresher training. Mandatory employee, employee exit interviews are recommended and that they be done by a neutral third party. Overtime needs to be minimized either through operational changes and monitored on an individual basis. The, the pay plan should be addressed and we need some management training. Next, we're going to go on to the budget. And I'm just about done. I'll go through this quickly. Revenues for Metro are 7.5 to 8 million dollars annually. You can see on the left side where our agencies are kicking in revenue and where our other revenue sources are from. We have expenses of anywhere from 6 to 10 million. That varies on different things such as capital spending. Metro does operate within their expense budget. Um, they do not manage their accounts receivables and there does not appear to be any cash management. Um, they have accumulated reserves. There was a high of 5.6 million in January. Luckily, we had that because it, it covered our $2 million in expenses that we did not ask for reimbursement on. Our recommendations are that Metro needs to manage the entire operation, not just an expense budget. They need to look at their income statement as well and their cash. Um, there's ample funding to make necessary repairs and not having to wait for, uh, the next upcoming budget in order to take care of needed repairs. And that is it.
Okay, are there any questions before we get Ms. Evans to come up? Counselor Garrett?
Uh, thank you for presenting these findings. And as I know you, we discussed, one of the main reasons I wanted to look into this is because if, is it one of your recommendations, do you think it's possible we could, uh, have more smaller vehicles and have more curbside pickup and delivery and do that economically? You, since obviously we don't have a high enough rider capacity, except for those routes y'all mentioned, uh, that really need the big buses. Uh, I'd love for us to be able to, you know, because I see citizens out there with groceries waiting for an hour, people who have to make it work by 7:30 and they have to get the bus stopped an hour and a half early to make the timing work. Uh, is that something y'all found in your audit that would be a possibility where we could, we could do more dial-a-ride type service?
Well, as it stands now, and I think John's going to talk about it, there is a certain set of hoops that someone has to jump through in order to meet the requirements to be a dial-a-ride passenger. I think he's going to touch on that, but definitely we can integrate smaller vehicles into the fixed routes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Counselor Davis? I was going to let Ms. Evans come up and address some of these issues and then we'll have, uh, we'll, John come up.
I don't know if you know where to start.
I really don't, but I did, I tried to take a few notes as she was talking and I know I, I didn't get all of them.
Sure.
Uh, but I, I'll try to address the ones that I did take notes on. Um, and the one regarding employees losing leave or leave going into catastrophic, as long as I have been at Metro... as I have been at Metro, an employee has never, ever been denied taking vacation. For bus operators, and our transit manager can attest to it, Mr. Owens, they get four weeks a year. They can take it if they want to. They get two weeks every six months. And so while they do work a lot of overtime, when we, when they select what route they want every six months, they get to pick their vacation. And so the same with maintenance. They don't lose vacation. If they don't take it, that's like myself. I don't, I'll donate my leave, or it'll go into catastrophic, but I have the opportunity to take it. And so it hurts us when we have employees who've been there for a long time, and they have four weeks available to them, use or lose, but we have to give it to them. It's theirs. So that, that's never happened at Metro. They can take the leave. Right now, it's the random days that we can't really approve, if a person just wants to take a random day. But a vacation, if they have two weeks, they get to pick a week or two weeks every six months. So that, I don't really know where that came from. But training, conducted by a third-party examiner, that doesn't mirror with transit. What our third-party tester does, and I'm sure he's well-qualified, but there's, transit is a whole different animal. It's a whole different everything. You have to do it to know it. You can't just learn it and know it. You have to do it. Everything is different. Routes, trips, blocks, FTA requirements, G-DOT, all of what is required. So to have put that responsibility on our third-party tester, you know, I wouldn't want to do that, because you have to know what that fare box is, what it does. You have to know about ADA, Automatic Announcements, the ADA Announcement System. It's the destination sign. It's so much with public transit. Routes, blocks, trips, it's a lot. So that's not in the scope of what our third-party tester does.
Well, and certainly, having a transit background, I would definitely not recommend that. So, you know, you've got to know transit, and if you don't know it, you just, you've got to know it.
Yeah. We try to, people we hire for operations, you know, promote from within, or persons with some CDL knowledge, because it's different. Management training, our managers and staff, not just management team. We go to a lot of training. A lot goes through the city manager for approval. FTA funding pays for a lot of it. So our new staff, they go, constantly go into training, because we lost that institutional knowledge. So the only way that they can learn their jobs is to go to training. So what I opted to do, since they're the ones hands-on, doing the work every day, is to let them go first, and then I go. I will go to the training, but they're doing it hands-on, so I try to send them, and then they come back and we work together to learn it. But they are attending training of every kind. In terms of gen fare training, we've got training scheduled with them, but it's not, it's expensive. They want like $6,000 just to come to us and show us the data system. Dial-a-ride trips, they're costly. That is the most expensive demand response, door-to-door, curb-to-curb service, that any transit system, you know, is $32, $40 a trip for a paratransit service. It's very costly. So to go from fixed route, bus stop, picking up on routes, to a demand response, is very costly. So I just want to mention, those are the four areas that have.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Any questions for the Director? Counselor Davis?
Well, we've still got two more pieces of it coming from John. Okay. All right. Yeah, and I'm going to ask, as John, I apologize, but we've got people here for second readings and one first reading, and if you don't mind, and I apologize, and I know there's a lot of folks here from Metro being patient, too, but if we could move through some of these rezoning issues, because the attorneys and the residents have been very, very patient, if counsel does not object? Okay. All right, let's, Mr. City Attorney, let's go to your agenda and try to get through a couple of those real quick.
All right, Mayor, ours is short and shouldn't take very long. First item is the second reading at 4590 Woodruff Road. Counselor Garrett, do you want to make a motion to add a condition to that particular ordinance?
Sure. And just so everybody on counsel knows, there was some discussion by one of the constituents about adding a 30-foot buffer, and I talked to the people who actually live directly behind this property, and they were, they prefer the evergreen buffer I've got in there. They do want that, because that'll provide the most cover for them. And also, the 30-foot buffer planning told me would make the property unusable, so we could get, you know, we could have a zoning appeal if we added that. The other thing, one of the constituents in that discussion said noise was a concern, and I mentioned that to Mr. Wells, and asked if they would agree to construction stipulations. And just so the public knows, he was already planning on not doing construction during these times, and being a very good steward, a good neighbor. But I am going to formally add them, just so it's in the record. And Mr. City Attorney does have these. The stipulations I add were that construction would begin no earlier than 7:00 AM and end at 7:00 PM during the week, and not start until 8:00 on Saturdays, and end at 7:00, and no construction on Sundays. I thought the residents need a day, there's no construction, particularly the Lord's Day, so. And they were perfectly agreeable to that, and we appreciate their willingness to do that. So that's the only amendment I'm adding.
So if we can get a motion on that amendment?
Second.
All right, motion second for the amendment to the ordinance. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Okay, and now we can take a final vote with this fifth condition already added, so you can vote on the entire rezoning.
Motion to approve with the conditions and amendments, and a second. Any further discussion to the rezoning? If not, please cue it. Counselors, enter your votes, please. Ms. Approve.
All right, that has passed with the five conditions of record. Clark Davis will get you a new original on that. The second zoning mayor is Norris Road, 2443, 2705, 2713. I think Counselor Crabbe may want to make a motion to delay or continue the second reading.
Counselor Crabbe?
Yes, thank you. I would like to ask for a continuation of the second reading for one month in order to discuss additional conditions.
Okay, is that in form of a motion?
Yes.
Motion second to delay for 30 days?
Yes. And the reason why I'm asking for 30 days is I have, I am not going to be here on September 24th, and I wanted to be here for that final vote.
Okay. All right, any discussion as to the delay? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, we'll bring that back on the second Tuesday in October. The last item, Mayor, is just a UDO amendment, first reading, Small Wireless Facilities Regulation. And this is required by and consistent with the new state law passed by the General Assembly that, of course, we and a lot of other cities had asked for assistance in this area, and we got some limited assistance, but this is really a comprehensive revision. Mr. Jones is here, if there are any questions.
Any questions, counsel?
All right. We'll vote on this in the second, I'm sorry, fourth Tuesday at 5:30. And then that's all we have listed, Mayor.
Okay. All right, we'll go, we've lost our auditors. We, um, check and see if John and Elizabeth are in the lobby? Well, we can, we can move in, as Counselor Allen reminded, we can move on into the public agenda. And just as a reminder, for those that appear on the public agenda, you get five minutes. And unfortunately, at the end of the five minutes, we'll need, we'll need to cut your back off. But our first up is Ms. Susan Gallagher from New Horizons.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, councilors, Mr. Hughley, and city staff. Thank you for allowing me this time on the public agenda. As the mayor said, my name is Susan Gallagher. I'm the Director of Development, Marketing, and Community Relations with New Horizons Behavioral Health, and I'm here to start a conversation of courage, and hope that you will continue this conversation as you go out into the community. New Horizons is the community service board for this region of Georgia. We serve eight counties, from Harris County down to Quitman and Clay, Quitman, Clay Counties. We are the, part of the public safety net for mental health and substance abuse services, and we have been serving the community for over 40 years. September is National Recovery Month. It's a celebration of recovery from mental health disorders and addictive disease. And this year marks the 30th anniversary of the Recovery Month celebration. The theme of Recovery Month is Prevention Works, Treatment is Effective, and People Recover. And we ask the community to join their voices together, because together, we are stronger to get the message out. This past Saturday, we had our fourth annual 5K Run for Recovery in Uptown Promenade, where over 300 people from the recovery community came together on our beautiful Columbus River Walk to celebrate National Recovery Month. I thank everybody who participated in the event, and I thank the community for making this possible. September is also Suicide Awareness Month, and I want to give you some statistics around suicide. The CDC reports that in the year 2017, there were 39,773 gun fatalities in the United States. 38% of those were homicide-related. A little over 1% were related to accidental shootings, accidental gun fatalities. A little over 1% were mass shooting-related. But the largest majority of gun fatalities in the United States in 2017, and historically, have been suicide. Almost 58% of gun fatalities in the United States are suicide-related. Suicide is not the problem, it's a symptom of the problem. We need to know the signs and symptoms of poor mental health in our friends, coworkers, community members, and we need to know the resources to help them get the attention that they need. We need to have conversations of courage around suicide, mental health, and mental awareness. Again, suicide is not the problem, it's a symptom. For every one homicide you hear on the news, there's almost two suicides, but we aren't talking about that. And that's the conversation I want us to get going. Mental health is an underlying contributing factor in so many of the ills that face society. Homelessness, unemployment, criminal justice involvement, domestic violence. And we address all of those issues. There's Domestic Violence Month, there's, but we need to tackle these root causes also, and that is untreated mental health. We know what the signs and symptoms are for stroke or heart attack. You know, when you're watching a movie and somebody grabs their arm, you know, ah, signs and symptoms of stroke. Do we know the signs and symptoms for mental health, mental illness? Do we know the resources that are available? New Horizons has partnered with DBHDD, the Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, to bring free trainings to the community over the next three years regarding mental health awareness and how to get help for suicide prevention in our community. DBHDD will bring in trainers from Mental Health America, from the National Alliance for the Mentally Ill, and New Horizons will put these training dates on our calendar on our website. Please visit our website, www.nh bh dot org. Check out our community calendar for education events around mental health, addictive disease, mental illness, and events that we support in the community to bring awareness to these topics. This Friday, New Horizons will be hosting our third annual Children's Mental Health Symposium. The topic is Childhood Suicide. Suicide is the number-two leading cause of death for children ages 10 to 17 in the state of Georgia. Number-two suicide, 10- to 17-year-olds. I want to let these things sink into you. We need to talk about these things. Thank you. www.nh bh dot org is our website, and thank you for this time.
Ms. Gallagher, say the website one more time.
Wait, slower. Slower, I'm sorry. www.nh bh dot org. That's for New Horizons Behavioral Health.
New Horizons does an amazing job, and you do as in leadership role. We appreciate all the different areas you touch within the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Loretta Wright here. Doesn't appear so. Ms. Denise Bynum? Okay. All right, Mr. Redmond, move back into the audit.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of counsel, Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney.
Oh, yes, sir.
It's good to be here with you today. I want to talk about one final aspect of the Metro operation and also parking services. I want to talk about the paratransit dial-a-ride service. First, you need to know that this was enacted by Congress with the American with Disabilities Act of 1990, which was an adjunct to the original Civil Rights Bill, the landmark legislation of 1964. And this is the one where they addressed persons with disabilities as being a group that was potentially being discriminated against. They basically required public transit systems to provide such services, and it was implemented in 1993 by Metro. It provides door-to-door transportation services for persons with verifiable physical, mental, or sight disabilities that limit or restrict the ability to use fixed route transit services. Utilizes a shared ride concept by advanced appointment scheduling, one day in advance, for a single-day trip or multiple trips for repetitive scheduled appointments. In order to qualify for this service, and I know Counselor Garrett asked about, could that type service be used for maybe late hours or for some smaller routes? The way it's set up is that disabled persons have to complete a dial-a-ride paratransit application, Part A, which is a lot of their personal information, and it goes into talking about their disability, their address, and contact information, that sort of thing. And then there's also a Part B of the application that is submitted by a medical provider of the disabled person. That may be by a physician, it may be by a registered nurse, physician assistant, nurse practitioner, or chiropractor, or a physical therapist. There's a number of different practitioners that can complete that, depending on the type and nature of the disability. That completed application is then submitted to Metro. The application is date-stamped and reviewed by Metro management. The applicant is notified of acceptance or rejection within 21 days, including the reason. Sometimes it's an incomplete application, and then they can resubmit if they need to. If it's approved, the applicant will be notified and approved for anywhere from six months up to three years. The approved applicant then receives an ID card for paratransit services, and then they bring them in for a meeting with the, it's held with the dial-a-ride customers, to fully explain the system, the process for the service initiation, the cost of services, methods of payment, and they explain it's a shared ride service, picking up and delivering multiple riders on the vehicle one time. They're also told that the fee is $2.50 each way, and that the fee must be paid on each leg of the route. In other words, they can't pay $5 in the morning and ride both ways. For one thing, they're probably not going to be on the same vehicle as they go back. The payment can either be made in cash with a prepaid card purchased from the Metro Transit Office, or with a smart. Office, or with a smart card. The smart card is basically like a reloadable credit card. You pay five dollars one time for it, and if your card wears out, they will replace it for free. And if you lose it, you do have to purchase a new one. It requires that the person call in the day before the service is needed to schedule the ride. It used to be it was a twenty-four-hour requirement, but they've now worked it out right up until the end of the day before that you can call in and get on there. You provide the time that you need to arrive in the destination, and then the time you'll be returning, and the dispatcher will then schedule you with their route match software. The software assists in determining the pickup times that would be necessary. It's really remarkable how well the system works. I rode some of those routes, and I was very impressed with how well it worked, considering that the bus may go out early in the morning, maybe leave at six-thirty. Some of them leave much earlier because if they're picking up a group of dialysis patients, frequently those people have to be at dialysis by maybe seven, eight. So, but just for regular appointments in transportation, they typically go out maybe six, six-thirty, pick up the first ones at the farthest points away from transfer station. The morning I went out, we were out on, almost onto the Fort Benningoff of Buena Vista Road and one of those subdivisions out there. Picked up about a dozen people over the next two hours, and then began taking them in order to their destinations. And they were all dropped off in a timely manner, about eleven-thirty to twelve. Now, that being said, weekdays, it usually requires seven to eight vehicles to transport up to about two-hundred-and-fifty riders both ways. Saturdays is usually a lighter day because many of the physician offices and places of medical treatment are not open. There are some that are open, obviously hospitals are open, and dialysis centers are usually open. But, so they usually only require four to five vehicles, and they transport more in the neighborhood of a hundred-and-forty to a hundred-and-eighty riders both ways on Saturday. The operators provide greater assistance to riders than is usually required on the fixed routes. Of course, we have wheelchair ramps and lifts to assist on the buses, on the fixed-ride buses, as well as on these vehicles. But you might recognize that a higher, much higher percentage of the riders of the dial-ride service will require that. So the riders typically spend about an hour to two-plus hours on the vehicle each way, depending on whether they're the first one on or the last one, and whether they get off at the early stops, or maybe they're toward the end. In some cases, the rider may be on there a bit longer if they happen to be the first one picked up and the last one dropped off. So vehicle comfort is very important. Several months ago, you probably saw some comments in the news media, both Ledger Inquirer reported, I believe, on some of the issues with dial-ride buses, as well as one of the TV stations, I don't recall which. But they were talking about the air conditioning systems not really holding up, particularly in the hot weather that we experience in our part of the United States. I think we can all recognize that, considering we're one-third of the way through the month of September, and we're experiencing daily highs right now of around a hundred degrees. So truly, it is an important factor. The air conditioning systems on some of the vehicles were not maintaining the comfortable temperature on these hot summer days. This seems to be more applicable to the older vehicles, which had a different type of air conditioning system. This condition may also be worsened by the length of time the doors are open for passengers loading and unloading, and also so many of being wheelchair transported that the ramp must be open and closed, and sometimes the driver get out and assist with helping them into the vehicle. Now, newer vehicles are equipped with much better equipment, and they have an improved roof-mounted air conditioning system with better airflow and better ventilation. So I observed this on the bus, one of the buses that I rode that morning, and the air conditioner was working fine. In fact, it was pretty cool early in the morning, but by mid-morning in the summertime, you could begin to tell it was hot when the door opened. But it stayed cool inside, and the passengers were very satisfied with that. The only recommendation I have is I would recommend that they continue to purchase these vehicles with the improved air conditioning systems so that these very sick and disabled patients can ride in comfort, because sometimes their rides are actually longer than the fixed routes. The longest fixed route that we have are two of them are an hour and fifty minutes. The shortest ones on those are fifty minutes, and then we've got some that are an hour and twenty minutes that are in the middle. But certainly, these can tend to be longer. The RT indicated agreement with this. I don't know how they, you could hardly disagree. But I would like to say this about the drivers I experienced on both the dial-ride routes and the fixed routes. The drivers are excellent. Ms. Barfield commented on how nice they are in greeting their riders and, you know, wishing them a good farewell when they get off, and have a nice day, and that sort of thing. They really are very attentive to the needs of their ridership. But I want to really compliment them on their driving skills and abilities. As she said, we rode a lot of routes. We spent a fair amount of time riding buses, particularly fixed routes. And I will tell you, I never saw one instance where a driver violated a safety rule, the rule of the road. They stop for the stop signs, they stop for railroad crossings, they do all the things that they need to do. And yet, they stay on their schedule and make their routes. And that's a real tribute to them and the good work that they do, and to the management of Metro, because they have been well-trained, and they do a great job. And I did want to mention that. The next portion of our report moves to parking management. Metro is charged with overseeing the parking management in several areas of the city, particularly the Uptown District, which basically is Ninth through Fourteenth Street and from Bay Avenue over to Third Avenue. They also look at the, supervise the Bay Avenue Garage, Front Avenue Garage, and River Center Garage. They monitor the Ninth Street Surface Parking Lot south of the Government Center, the Citizen Service Center Parking Garage right outside here, and also the Lake Bottom Parking, because they've had needs in that area. And they do a very good job of doing what they do. Parking management staff consists of a Parking Division Manager, and they have about eight part-time officers. That number fluctuates sometimes, depending on the needs and the season, but, and sometimes they have vacancies. But they've been working with the part-time staff for the last year or so, instead of having just a couple of full-time people, and I think that's worked out well. It's reduced the cost because they don't have as many benefit costs. They do have payroll taxes, but they don't have the vacation and the retirement costs that would be with a full-time employee. Some of the parking management challenges, particularly in the Uptown area, is that the streets have become, parking has become heavily occupied in the Uptown District, particularly on several of the blocks of Broadway and then First and Second Avenue. The business owners and workers have been parking on the street, and frankly, they, just like you and I do, if the price is free or the same everywhere, we're going to park as close to the place we're going, whether it's our employment or a place we're going to stop and shop, as we possibly can. That's human nature. Unfortunately, that causes customers to have difficulty finding street parking, particularly at peak times, circling the blocks and waiting for a space to open. I remember well how the parking was in that area back in the nineteen fifties when I was a child. That's the way you went to shop, and you did major shopping down there. It was not so much restaurants and entertainment locations, venues, and governmental and legal and financial. Those things were all there, but that's the way you did your big retail shopping, and you had some major stores, Curvins, Davison's, Sears, and Montgomery Ward and others, as well as a lot of smaller shops. And I remember circling the block and circling. I hated to go down there for back-to-school clothes and at Christmas time, because it was a lot of riding around and waiting. Now, since that time, the city has built several parking garages that I mentioned earlier. The parking garages, at the same time that the spaces on the street are full, and best practices of parking management says that even in your busiest times, fifteen percent of your spaces should be empty and available. There should always be at least one available out of every seven spaces. And I'm not counting loading zones or handicap spaces in that, because only certain people can use those. But of general parking spaces, there should always be at least one for every seven available. Our parking garages, on the other hand, contain many vacant spaces. I found a lot of them to be rather dark, the lights, many of them were burned out. I understand in one of the garages, it was converted to LED lighting, they had some problems with it, and Ms. Beaker in Public Services said that that's being worked on under the warranty, and hopefully that has been corrected. And that was in the Bay Avenue Garage. But I do see a lot of cobwebs in the corners, a lot of dust collecting, trash that'll be discarded and not necessarily put in the trash can. And then particularly on the rooftop of the River Center Garage, and I'm told it has also happened on the Bay Avenue Garage a time or two, we see in a minute a loitering of people up there, primarily young people. This is a place they go and hang out and kind of have like a block party. I went up there one night when I was monitoring garages, and frankly, I felt pretty uncomfortable up there on the top floor of the River Center Garage, although I park in the garage frequently when I attend River Center events, or sometimes during the day when it's convenient. There's a lot of activity going on that some of it's probably legal and some is not legal, but certainly the loitering needs to stop. And, you know, that's probably causing some people to have a lot of angst about parking in the garages, that and them being dark and appearing to be unattended. And because you don't typically have an operator in a garage anymore, even one where you have metered parking, you have, it's basically a self-service station, so there's not an attendant readily available. But, you know, it would be nice if we had a little bit more presence of either some, you know, law enforcement or the enforcement staff there. So, you know, we do recognize that these people are, they're busy. The parking management is primarily tracking the time that cars in spaces versus posted time limits, usually by block, maybe a two-hour limit or a four-hour limit, whatever. I understand we've recently had a request for an eight-hour limit, but nevertheless, there's ways to handle those things. But unfortunately, that yields minimal parking revenue to support it, when the only thing that you're collecting is fine revenue. And for the last three years, seventy-seven percent of the revenue that's been generated is by parking enforcement, is for fines for violation of the time zone limits. And unfortunately, every business in a block does not have customers that need to stay the same amount of time. Even a nice sit-down restaurant, a two-hour may be fine, or it may need to be a four. But a lot of the restaurants and shops, two hours is plenty ample time to go in and do their business. Council Woodson says no, she likes more time than that. I will say this, and, you know, I know that we've got some key stakeholders in the Uptown area. We've got a lot of business owners that have invested a lot of money down there over the last two or three decades. We could certainly name some of the big ones, Latissus and Senovus and those kind of companies. But we've also got a lot of small business people that have opened up down there, and many of them are doing a good job, and they're being successful. But this is beginning to impact them. I called on my friend Ross Horner at Uptown Columbus to see if he had any feedback from the business owners, because I figured they were important. I'd like to know what they had to say. Well, Ross, being the politically correct guy he is, not going to put his job on the line, he says, "Tell you what, I'll call the board together and invite you over, and you can hear it directly from them." And I went, and I believe Mr. Everett was also over there from parking, and I'm glad he was, because we heard a lot of their complaints about that. And, you know, show of hands, almost everyone in the room had gotten a forty-dollar ticket for being over a time zone.
Excuse me, John.
Yes, sir.
We did have a question.
Why don't you finish that and then come back to me?
Oh, okay.
Finish that, that.
Okay.
I'll do that. And so what we found is that several years ago, although they've discussed it at their board meetings of Uptown over the last three or four years, so I guess three years since Mr. Horner's been over there, he said initially, you know, they were kind of so-so on the parking, but over the last year, it's gotten a lot more, the parking is more heavy. There's more traffic down there, there's more people shopping and stopping in. And some of the shops are really particularly burdened by a time limit. One of them that's in the two-hour parking zone is a high-end beauty salon, 501. And many of their patrons come in or there four or more hours. They spend hundreds of dollars having their hairstyle cut, colored, permed, and whatever else, and probably facials and a lot of other auxiliary services. And it's kind of hard for either one of their patrons to run out and feed a meter if they had one, or to go out and move the car and get it to another block, or take it around the corner. In their case, they have to do that in order to park it. Because many of the services that they're receiving are timed services, and also the attendants that are serving them, they are also monitoring that time, because if you leave it on too long, you've got a real problem with your hair. So they said in their case, they have paid a number of these tickets for their patrons. You been there, ma'am? They said they've actually picked up a tab, because they do not want to lose a customer that spends several hundred dollars a month in their salon to have it, to go for fines. So, you know, it's been a problem for them. And out of the roughly thirty employees that were present and board members, twenty-eight of them readily said that they would support metered parking at this time, that they felt like it was time for it. I understand that they may still want to park in front of their store, but several of the owners commented to me that if it would help lead their employees to a parking garage, that they would move their cars there as well. And frankly, if you meter parking at anywhere from a dollar to two dollars an hour, not many workers down there, particularly at the lower levels, are going to be able to pay ten to twenty dollars a day to park. I mean, that's three to four hundred dollars a month, and that gets to be pretty expensive, you know, for somebody that may be fairly low minimum wage, or even up to ten or twelve dollars an hour to pay that much out. But there was certainly some support there for it, if, you know, if you feel the time is right. I will say this, I looked around to see what other cities, particularly in Georgia and Alabama, that are similar size to us, some a little larger, some a little smaller. Atlanta does have metered parking on streets, garages, and surface lots. They do outsource some of their surface lot management to other various companies. Their price is varied by location, but they're generally in the one to two-dollar-per-hour range. Surface lots are usually priced by the day, and for people that want to park all day while they're working in their office or whatever. And some of those, as I said earlier, were outsourced. Augusta has metered parking, they're the most recent one. In fact, they finally began theirs on June tenth of this year. Their parking is in the one to two-dollar-per-hour range. It depends on the location. Some of it varies, because the central business district and then the medical districts down near the medical complex with the Medical Center of Georgia and Medical College, those are at higher rates than they are in some of the less frequented areas. They monitor theirs from eight AM to eight PM, Monday through Saturday. Savannah also has metered parking, and they have had it for many years. Theirs is Monday through Friday. They have a dollar-an-hour rate from five AM to five PM for street and garage, and then it's two dollars flat rate from five PM to nine PM. They have a lot of night activities and nightlife, so they charge for that. Saturdays and Sundays, they just charge a five-dollar flat rate. Special events range from five dollars to twenty dollars per day. I think their St. Patrick's Day Parade, and that's the kind of things would fall into that category. Macon implemented metered parking about a year and a half ago. Theirs is on Monday through Saturday from eight AM to eight PM, it's a dollar twenty-five per hour on the street. Athens has metered street parking, Monday through Saturday, eight AM to ten PM, at a dollar and a quarter per hour. It is free on major holidays. And then their parking decks, the first thirty minutes are free, then it's a dollar per hour thereafter. On football game days, they made it very clear, it's twenty-five dollars a day or a hundred and seventy-five for the season. And that's not negotiable. And I found that when I was going up there more regularly. I feel like it's a transition time for parking, and we need to transition from parking chaos to a parking management system. Clearly, the best practices book, as well as one, another one I read on the high cost of free parking, says that you need to have metered parking, because there has to be a financial incentive for people to move from one place to another. And in one place, I read an example. They said if concert tickets or tickets to sporting events are the same price for every seat in the house, what you'll have is a long line to get in the door as soon as it's open. They'll all run to the preferred seats, in this case, the preferred curbside parking, and they'll take those spaces. Now, the problem is, if you've stood in line four hours to get in a venue for an event like a like a concert or a football game, pretty soon you're gonna need to make a body break or you're gonna need to go to the concession stand and get something to drink or to eat. Well, as soon as you get up and vacate that ringside seat, guess what? Someone else occupies it and when you come back, you're gonna be pretty upset. "Hey, I, I reserved that." No, it's not reserved for you, it's available. So that's kind of the way it is with parking. So you've got to make, there be some enticement in order to, to get them to go. And they said they recommend the financial incentive rather than a stiff fine. Obviously, you still find vehicles that stay in over the time limits of what they put on a meter. Likewise, if they park incorrectly in a non-parking space or in front of a fire hydrant, there's some pretty serious consequences from that. Fire hydrants, you block a key fire hydrant, you may burn down several million or fifty million dollars of a block of business if they can't get to it. I had that experience when I was at Tobe Island. We had one fire plug and it was down in the central business district and people would park in it because the fine was thirty-five dollars a day. That was only twice what the fee was to park in the lot. Well, we raised that when we changed the fees and reconfigured parking and it became a five-hundred-dollar mandatory fine. We went to the top. And if you do that, you never have another one parked there. So there are some things that you can do that have, with financial incentives that work out. It is necessary to get those vehicles of the business owners and workers of Uptown businesses from the street parking to the garage to provide accessible parking for the customers. The system needs to provide financial incentive again to make it work and the system needs to provide safe, convenient parking at a reasonable and predictable cost without constant fear of expensive citations. The recommendations is to obtain an ordinance to reestablish parking fees in the Uptown District or the on-street curbside parking. And I recommend it, we go eight to six now, but we only do Monday through Friday. A number of these people, when they came to the meeting that I attended, they said, "We really need it done on Saturday because we have market days now in the downtown or uptown area and they park right in front of my business." And you know, it's one thing that they're out on the sidewalks or in the medians selling their goods, but you know, when they are the ones that are parking in front of my business all day, most of the day on Saturday, you know, that, that affects their Saturday business. So they, they felt like it was better to do it six days a week. I think there's also things that we need to recognize that garage parking, we want it to remain, I would recommend that we do that at a rate of a dollar fifty per hour or two dollars a day for the night street service lot, I think is what we're charged now with parking there. Garage parking, I would encourage you to remain free for this time, to encourage off-street parking in the garages. Likewise, parking revenue is very essential because it's used to fund the cost of parking, both striping the streets and the signage, also for keeping the garages clean, utilities for the lights in the garage. Y'all may not realize it, but our three downtown garages cost between a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand a year for the electricity. I know Mr. Hugh was aware of it and Ms. Rosa Evans is. But it is a big-ticket item and people don't realize how much it costs to do that. And you know, it also costs money to maintain those bulbs and replace them as they need it. The parking equipment system, you also have to have that and then you have the parking management or enforcement group, which I prefer to call them parking management if we had a choice. You also need to clean and re-strip a lot of the parking garages. You need to convert the other two downtown from, or uptown from LED lighting and then place more trash receptacles at the elevators and stairwell entrances of each floor and with the, and install high-resolution cameras for better security. Many of the cameras there are not, either not working or they're very hazy. I did review those cameras and I can see it. You, you can see shadowy images and you could, you know, if a person is very large, you could probably identify them and pick them out, but you really cannot get much facial recognition if you needed to, to identify perpetrator of a crime in there or possibly even the victim. So that needs to be done and that would provide revenue to cover those costs of maintaining them. You also need to restrict access to the upper deck and open it only as needed for high-volume events, for example, at the River Center or during the holiday season from Thanksgiving to New Year's, we have a lot of events going on, trade centers, company holiday parties. We have the cities and some of the larger companies are down there and it fills up a lot of those garages. And there are times when you need that upper deck open, but it needs to be locked down and the elevators and stairwells need to be able to contain to keep the loiterers off of that. We need to find a different place to put those folks if they need a place to go. Again, as I said, if we're going out to restrip some spaces, we'd have to install the electric parking meters, boxes, and I would recommend you use the boxes rather than the post meters. I know we had the post meters in the past in the uptown, or called downtown then, area, but I, I can tell you from the experience that I inherited at Tobe, the year before I went over there, they accused the parking management people of robbing the parking meters. What we found out was that wasn't the problem at all. Many of the cities that had done away with the post meters and had gone to electronic meters, they got rid of those meters. Where'd they sell them? They sold them on eBay and Craigslist. Well, if you're a thief, you can buy as few as eight to ten meters and you'll get one of each key set and you have keys to every parking meter in every city of the country and you can go buy in, in places like Tobe where we collected a lot of revenue per day. They can empty a meter out and take several hundred dollars out of there in just one meter in a day's time. So that, that's a critical factor that needs to be considered. Clearly, you have to post signage for the metered areas. You need to have, develop and conduct an educational campaign on parking in riverfront and uptown streets and the garages and have wayfinding signs for that. And you need to utilize your parking management staff to ensure compliance, but also to provide a presence of safety and security, taking only the expired permits and improperly parked vehicles. Use the correctional officer and prisoners to clean the parking areas, as I know that's being done now, but there's, there's areas that are not being thoroughly cleaned in the garages and they'll need to spend more time in each one. Emptying the trash and recycle receptacles and moving waste and recycled materials to a proper disposal storage area. They also need to use the same crew to inspect the lightings and the cameras and replace bulbs and perform minor maintenance and then dispatching assistance for the more complex repair issues. And then ideally, it'd be nice after dusk to be able to provide a security ambassador to escort or transport patrons to the parking locations in garages after dusk, Monday through Saturday via transport carts. This, this could either be done by the metro parking staff or it could be partnered with Uptown Columbus. I think they already have some of those vehicles and would probably be willing to work with you on that. In our opinion, the RT response is that they feel the business owners and employees will just pay the hourly rate and continue to use the parking spaces closest to their place of business, leaving no space for patrons to conduct business in Uptown. Parking is currently enforced in Uptown from eight AM to six PM Monday through Friday. Legally, yes, those employees and business owners can do that if they choose to, but I don't think many owners are gonna choose to do that when it starts blocking out customers and they can't get to their stores, because eventually it affects their business, their profitability. And I, what I don't want to see happen again in Columbus is a thriving business community move out of that area and move out to the shopping centers. And that's exactly what happened in the late fifties and early sixties. And soon, we had a pretty much dead downtown, other than the banks, the attorneys and the courthouses. And that's pretty much what you had for a long period of time and it's taken a long time to rebuild that and I'd hate to see us return to that. And I believe that metered parking is the way to go. And I felt, got that same feeling. I said twenty-eight of the thirty present said, supported it and one of the other two before the meeting was over said, "Well, he could support it too." He felt like it might help him as well. Any questions that, Council Tom, I know you had something earlier.
I think there's one or twelve.
If you can remember.
Mr. Redmond, I should know the answer to this. In these parking garages, the city parking garages, do we have the automatic police call boxes? I know that in some of the private garages, they do downtown. Do we have those in the city? You know what I'm talking about, the blue bulb? We do not.
I didn't recall seeing any and I, I want y'all to know that I, I went down there and went through all of these garages, also did the one at the Trade Center, I think as well. But I, I took a meter, a light meter and did illumination studies both in the daytime and the night on every floor, in the elevators, in stairwells. And some of this was kind of spooky, particularly at night, doing it alone. I will say that, but, but I found that there's a, there's a wide variation in the illumination. Right near the doors or near the sides where they're open, you have a lot of illumination, but particularly toward the middle and on the ramps that go up and down, the slope ramps, there tends to be a lot of that and for some reason, those bulbs seem to be burned out more than the others. I don't know if there's any rhyme or reason for that, but I, I will say that, that we, we would need those kind of call boxes and we need the better security cameras. And they're, they're not that much more expensive. The cameras that are in there are pretty old and newer technology is available. I've talked to Randy Krill, he does that with the Police Department and has worked with on some of the monitoring of the uptown area in the public areas like the medians and the intersections. Of course, that's also helpful in cases of traffic accidents, it gives them a better read on it, but we need the same types of things in, in the garage and they're not that expensive.
I've had several people say to me that they did not want to park in the garages because of their feeling that they were not safe. And I, you know, tried to, to give them some reassurance, but some of the things you're talking about, I think would help alleviate some of that concern and that, the darkness and so forth.
I agree.
And I, I just, as you were talking about the parking, you're gonna have to do a lot of convincing to convince me to do parking meters, but I did want to say to you that I lived, as you know, for a while in the San Francisco Bay Area and part, went to meetings in downtown San Francisco and it was not unusual to pay thirty-five dollars for a half-an-hour parking six blocks from the building that you had your meeting in. So everything is relative and I'm not gonna pay thirty-five dollars for a half-hour parking in Columbus.
No, ma'am.
Six blocks away from where I'm going, but everything, I guess, is, is relative. But if we could do something in those garages to help with the lighting and, and that sort of thing, I think that would help. And I love the idea of the carts to move people around downtown. I think that would do a lot to help get people accustomed to using the, the garages.
As I understand, there are some valet services that will park your car and then you can go back to them and they'll retrieve it for you. And that's fairly common in, particularly in hotels and, and garages and, and some of the larger cities. During my time at Tobe, I know I had to go down to the county offices in Savannah and it's in the business district and also the tourist district there. And I, I can sympathize with your San Francisco parking. The parking was very expensive and it was very short-term. They even had their, their metered parking limited to two, two or three hours. And I know when I had to go down to pick up a copy of the digest for the tax group at, at Tobe and, because I had to take it back and do some work on it and then return it to the tax assessor's office. And each time I was running to get to the car because there was the attendant, he was coming along writing tickets and I, I could run a little bit faster then than I can now. So I made it, but you know, it's difficult whether you're in the street or in the garages. Most of the garages in that area are taken up by either the city, the city of Savannah's employees or, or the Chatham County. So I, that, you know, I will say this, and at the meeting that I attended here with the Uptown business leaders, Mr. Pace Halter, I believe the head of W.C. Bradley Company, he made a comment in there that I thought was very relevant. He said, "I don't think we have a shortage of parking in Columbus at this time." He said, "What I think we have is a shortage of preferential parking, i.e. the curbside street spaces is where everyone wants to park." He said, "We got plenty of garages." He said, "You, you could, you can walk through any of them and there's lots of room. Even on a busy day, they're three, fours empty." Columbus State has taken up some of that slack, particularly now that they've moved the nursing school downtown, they're leasing some of the space on the top of the Bay Avenue Garage and they also, of course, the students and faculty are, are quite a bit in the, in the front avenue garage.
And we've got a number of other questions and comments.
Okay.
Council Garrett?
Mr. Redmond, I can say, I mean, the metered parking, I've seen some good examples of it. I'm very much in favor of it. I went, went to Mercer Law School, I was there ten years ago and I went there recently for depositions downtown and it was fantastic. You used to not be able to get a space. Everybody would park in front of the restaurants and everything and there was ample parking during the week, during prime, like lunchtime hours. Same thing, I'm working at our Birmingham office some and same thing in downtown Birmingham, which is bustling during the day, there's available spaces because people are using the parking garages that are free for like the first hour. What, what do you think, Mr. Redmond, about privatization? A couple of these cities that I've seen, they've got private parking companies and if we're not, if we're revenue neutral or we're losing money with parking, I've, I've heard about them making money off, off the parking.
Well, oh, there's plenty of money to be made with parking. In fact, if you read the book and I have a copy of it here with me today, I'm not gonna read it to you, but in the interest of time, it's called "The High Cost of Free Parking." And one of the points it makes is that the most valuable real estate that any municipality has is their parking spaces. You, you take a standard space, which is generally considered to be eight feet wide by eighteen feet long, and the amount of revenue that it can generate in a year's time is unreal. At Tobe, we, we, except in the wintertime, our spaces were full all the time. If we'd had forty thousand spaces, then we could have filled them, but we, I could only move it from seventeen oh one to twenty-one forty-six, but without building garages and I was in the process of doing that before I left. I don't think they ever completed the project, but you know, it's, it's a moneymaker. Now, if you want to just ban it and, and, you know, throw it out and let a third party have it, you can certainly do that, but what you're going to realize out of it is nearly as, not nearly as much as what you'll do if you operate it successfully on your own. Fact of the matter is, parking revenue at little bitty Tobe went from eight hundred thousand to a million six in a three-month period after I took responsibility for it. We increased the rates from a dollar to a dollar fifty per hour and we found an additional four hundred and forty-four spaces that were not as convenient to the beach and to the restaurants, but nevertheless, they were legitimate spaces and we could put people in them and people found them and parked in them. So it can be a really moneymaker. Now, I'm not gonna tell you, equipment and systems are cheap. If we look to just doing the uptown area, we're looking at about fifty boxes to cover twenty-five blocks, because it's five blocks by five if we do that entire uptown area from Bay Avenue over through Third. Those, those pieces of equipment are about ten to twelve thousand apiece. I'm sure, you know, our purchasing department, with their skills in negotiating, could probably get that down, particularly if you're buying a lot of them. So you know, we could easily spend five, six hundred thousand dollars on that equipment. I spent that at Tobe and we had it covered in less than ninety days. That's how quickly it paid for itself.
I'd definitely like to see that evaluation at a work session then.
Okay. Now, I can't say that the same is true here. I, I mean, we have certain streets that are very, very busy. We have some that are in the, around the churches that are probably occupied primarily by workers and staff there, there's schools and daycares and I, you know, we might want to exempt some of that areas and that's fine. Of course, you can cut down on your machines if you do that, but I would not recommend doing the metering of the garages at this time. For one thing, we want to move people to the garages, not, you know, just transfer them from one place to the other and charge them a few dollars less or a dollar an hour less or something. Because the cost of doing the garages ranges from about three hundred to about six hundred thousand per garage to do it. So you know, if down the road we get to the point that, like they were in San Francisco, where spaces were so critical, I'm sure they're metering their garages. They do in Savannah, they do in Atlanta. When we go there on business, we go in there and we have to pay. And you may walk down five, six flights of stairs with a broken hip to get out. I did that a couple of years ago, but you know, it, it's still, the fact is, every, every other community of our size or larger in Georgia is already doing it. And we're leaving a lot of money on the table that could be used to cover the expenses because... the expenses. Because to do this right, I mean, we're spending a quarter of a million dollars or so now on it. And probably if we were doing it right, we'd be spending almost half that again. You know, to keep the illumination, get it up, to upgrade those lights. As Big Le gave me, cost of upgrading those other two garages, and they weren't cheap. It was about fifty or sixty thousand for one and about thirty-five for the other ones, I recall. So you're talking about a hundred thousand right there. Cameras need to be upgraded. You wouldn't believe it, but in the River Center Garage, the primary elevators there on the side toward the River Center for the Performing Arts, most of the bulbs in those elevators were burned out that night. I think there was six bulbs in there. And one had two burning and one had three. And it's pretty dark in there. So, you know, we need, we're gonna have to pay attention to those things. But if you want, if you wanna do it right, you need the revenue to support the cost. But it, it can provide you with, with a lot of benefits financially.
Thanks, sir. Councilor Woodson?
Yes, thank you very much for, um, the report. I use that garage every time I'm downtown. Um, I've been blessed then because I haven't seen any of what you have, um, described, you know, today. I very, I feel very comfortable. Matter of fact, one time it was so packed, I went to the, when you go in to the left side, it's a space like for the city. And I parked there and this gentleman came and said, "You can't park there." And I said, "Can I use this and park there?" And it was my city, um, parking thing. Um, and he allowed me to park there. Um, I've always felt, you know, comfortable. But, um, I'm not saying those things are not happening. I've just been blessed that when I've been down there has been no problem. And it's been used. I mean, very good. I have not seen the kids riding around like the mayor and all said, but that doesn't mean it doesn't exist. Um, I'm really happy to hear that we're open to the meters because I've always thought the meters were great. Um, I've had seen them in, in other communities. I agree with, um, Councilor, um, Garrett. I think we should have a work session on it because I'm interested in seeing how it works. Because I, I was trying to think where was I, but my senior moments won't let me. But I know there was one where we parked and we put the money in it and, um, it told us the time. And then we were able to, um, it, it light flashed, you know, let us know, you know, when we walked by, it was telling us, "Uh, your meter's about to..."
Some of them done that way. Some of the boxes will print a slip of paper with the time it expires. You put it on your dash and you can put as much on it as you want to.
I've done-
I will tell you this, one of the ways that the revenue increased so much more, cause I know if you've been doing the math in your head, you say, "Oh, no, that wouldn't have went up quite, uh, it wouldn't have doubled." I'll tell you what happens. When we went to a meter where people pay with credit cards or debit card.
Yes.
They rarely put fifty cents or a dollar on it. They don't put, you know, it's not like pulling in your change out of your pocket and trying to feed the meter. They gonna put generally four hours on there at a minimum. Now, they don't necessarily stay in that space four hours. They may move from there to somewhere else. The nice thing about that type of thing is that you, you've got that ticket on your dash. You take it with you. You can move from one place in town to another and, and it's okay, as long as it's a legitimate space. You can, you can change locations four, three or four times in that-
Yes.
-in the, in the course of a day. And particularly people that go to the beach for a day, they do that quite a bit. So what we found is a lot of people are paying for parking. They don't use it all. They drive away. Well, that ticket expires at that time of day. So if they go back to Savannah for the night to have dinner or whatever, and they come back the next day, they gonna have to buy another one. It's not-
And, and I can vouch on that one, too.
And we also-
Cause I've experienced that, too, where you buy and you have the ticket. And once you, um, leave the space, that's it.
It's just like leaving a meter with, still showing twelve minutes on it or twenty-four minutes. I mean, you can't get your pennies back out or whatever.
You mentioned something about, um, market day. I think that's something that, um, we can discuss with, um, Ross.
Sure.
Because they pay an annual fee to be at the market. So it could be done where in order for you, you can drop your stuff down, but your parking has to be at the, uh, parking lot.
The garage.
And they can get a sticker to them so that they can have it on their windshield. So you can tell if the person is there for market day or not. I mean, there's a way to rectify, you know, that problem. I'm interested in the meters because I wanna see how they police it.
Okay. Well, different meters work different ways. But, um, like I said, one, one method is that you print the ticket and you put it on the thing. There are others that are totally electronic. Now, i- in this, of course, it's been twelve years since I, I was over at Tybee and did that. But now, you, you actually can, you can pay and put more time on your meter with a smartphone.
Yes.
If you got a wallet to pay or-
I was going there.
Yeah. And, you know, I think it is a good work session topic because as we get into the details on that, there's gonna be a lot of questions. So I think, I think just a holistic view of your recommendation on the parking is ideal today. But then we'll drill down a little bit when we can, uh, bring, bring us back to our-
And that, and that's why I mentioned, again, the work session and said to bring us different items.
It's a good idea.
Because I am aware there's, there are different methods of doing it. And my curiosity is how do they know it expired? And is there somebody walking around? Is the system-
Yeah.
That, and on the, um, security-
You have, you have, you have both types of systems. You can do it with people walking around. And obviously we'd be checking the, the tickets that are on the, on the win-
Yep.
Glove, uh, you know, on the dashboard. But the electronic systems, they also can be tracked from a, from a tracking station as to where they are and whether the meters are expired or expiring.
And again, we can get into all that, I think, when we have our work session just on, just on parking. I don't mean to squash. This is a great conversation. But when we talk about parking in uptown, it, it could last a while. Anything else, ma'am? I didn't mean to interrupt. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm accustomed to it.
I know.
[laughing]
Okay, that hurt.
Nick, could you, could you make sure, um, that you also bring the cameras? Because in today's technology, there's so many unex- unexpensive, um, methods that we can use that we don't have to spend thousands and thousands of dollars. Um, I have one in, in, I have several in my home. And on the smartphone, I can see who comes in, who don't. Um, matter of fact, I had a delivery and I talked from my phone. They thought I was at the house and I wasn't. So bring that along in the work session.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I apologize.
I love you.
Any other questions?
Councilor Davis?
Yeah, and I, I'm gonna be, try to be real quick here. Yeah, I think that work session'd be good for the parking matter. The, uh, the city manager, if, if we may, a, a lot of this stuff is, still digesting it. Um, you know, it's managed, some of management matters. Uh, that's your backyard. Um, y- you know, I would suggest maybe, a, a suggestion for me would be to maybe compile some, I, I, I have some questions. But compile some of this stuff, maybe put a, an action plan together and just kinda get back with us on a lot of this stuff later, if you would. Usually, I think in the past, we've done, you know, if it's something extensive, we've done it kinda that way. That's kinda, I think that's been your, your, uh, the, the process that usually, uh, usually you go by. But, um, uh, there's a couple of things. I, I mean, i- i- the, the, the question about, uh, it being an enterprise fund and, you know, maybe we are turning it into authority. I'm interested in that. The one about the software, I, I have questions about that. If we're, it's not being utilized or we're not training, do we really need it? Or do we have people in IT that can go over and help fill that gap? I don't know. Um, these are questions. But since we're running out of time here, I guess, uh, in order to do other business, I'm just gonna throw it out. You don't have to really, you know, if you wanna respond, you can. Um, uh, I, I, you know, I, I thought about some of the stuff of the, uh, the, um, y- you mentioned something about the, the one thing that caught my eye was on the, on the money side. I didn't know if we have a schedule, a daily schedule, or, uh, in the MTN, the, uh, what do we call it? A bucket or a dump or some, uh, we called it something.
On the fare box?
Yeah, the fare box. But, you know, I heard two, three days, I think. Somebody said two, three days and, or it gets forgot in a, in a bus over here. I'm, you know, I'm asking a question. Is there a, you know, daily, a daily dump and a scheduled dump where it's all documented? But, um, and then, um... That's, you know, and those are all referrals. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say those are referrals. But there's, there's some stuff I wanna digest in here. And I will, but I think an action plan probably would help with something like that.
And, and I'll have, uh, Metra to follow up. But to answer your question about fare box, it's done daily. When the buses come in, in the evening, it's pulled, it's dumped, and it's, uh, the data is transferred to the computer and they have to pull it up and tell you how many pennies in down the quarters and how many rode that day and how many, I mean, all that's done daily.
Good.
I think the point that they were making is if, if a bus breaks down and they tow the bus in and they tow it into the bay, that fare box may not get pulled for some reason that day. And so after it's repaired and it goes through the wash system, they clean it up, they pull the fare box, they dump it, and then it gets put in the wrong day. And so that may cause the revenue to be up or something like that. But, um, but certainly we want to come back and respond to what you heard, uh, in the early report. And so we'll certainly do that.
Right.
But that's the thing on, on the revenue. And I, I do want to say that, um, uh, on the parking, um, I really like the work that they've done, uh, on parking. Um, and, um, I, I think that, uh, we should, um, pursue, uh, at least a study or further look and, and come back to you. I think, you know, the other communities that the auditor mentioned within the state of Georgia and even outside the state of Georgia. And I think Councilor Garrett mentioned Birmingham and Macon. It's time, in my opinion. It makes sense. Uh, we need to bring it back to you. Uh, the only difference is it's, it's, you know, it's, I know that you've asked John to come back and work study. It's my belief that when an auditor has done his work, he hand it off to who needs to have it. And then they bring it forward. And so that's, the auditor can go on and do some other audits, as far as I'm concerned. But we've got staff in place. I love the work you've done. We'll take it, uh, my staff, and we'll drive it and bring it forward in a work session with John's assistance. We can't ignore that, cause he's already told you what he did in, in Tybee. So we'll consult John with his background and experience. Certainly, he's had great experience and a background in it. And it's, was successful. I agree with everything you said about, in my opinion, that's not something we want to contract out. Even if we contracted out to a management company, we still have to pay utilities. You know, the lights and all the electricity for the garage. Management company is not gonna take on that. And so we would pay that. And so I asked the finance director, what was the revenue last year? And she says, "You know, without utilities, you know, you spent about a hundred and forty-two thousand, but you collected over two hundred thousand in revenue." So it tells you if you're using meters and you do all that John has outlined. Uh, not necessarily that we're trying to make money, but we wanna pay the bills, you know. And, uh, it can be done. And so Mayor Counsel, we'll be happy to bring that back to you and just, and get John to consult. Uh, we consult John, uh, Mr. Redmond, the internal auditor. Cause I mean, he knows the contacts and he has the background and experience in it. So we'd be happy to do that.
And the city manager, the la- last one, I, I was trying to read through here real quick. The last one I wrote down note, and this is in general, but it, it did surface in the conversation about, there was a mention about a lack of mechanics. And that's been kinda concerning me for a while.
Yeah.
And maybe at a work session that we focus on that. And I would ask the question kinda similar to what, uh, Councilor, uh, Garrett asked about, maybe there's another way to do it. I don't know. Maybe, maybe we go to the private sector and, and, and work on some of this stuff if we're not able to, to cover it within the garages or, or from within. But, um, and, and look, by no means, I'm glad what you just said. By no means this is an acquisition. It's not a trial or anything like, uh, like this. It's, it, this is good government. And it's accountability and it's just bringing things to the surface that, that this government can run better, smoother. And that's a plus for the, for the citizens of Columbus. So I appreciate what, what you just said.
Yeah. And, and let me just say, um, you know, I, I saw in the paper yesterday and I said to my wife, I can't remember who it was, but they're gonna hire a thousand people. And then I heard on the news this morning about UPS hiring hundreds of people for the season. Um, you heard the, the movement of people with tenure at Metra. You know, most people, when they put ten years, fifteen years on a job, they don't leave. They, they want to retire. But these are people with ten years and fifteen years who find jobs paying more. And they're trying to take care of right now. And they leave. And so not just Metra have, you know, Public Works, they'll stand here telling you all day, "We've got, they've got problems with mechanics." I mean, we have problems hiring bus operators cause they leave and they go to Fort Benning. They pay more. And it's, it, it blows my mind that they'll go leave us with benefits and go to Fort Benning and make more and not get benefits. Cause they are, they want the right now money. Yeah, I can see more in my paycheck. And so that's a challenge for us. And, oh, Mayor, we're talking about, I mean, from police officers to, when we were at the community meeting last week at Grant Chapel, Mayor, you know, we brought out the fact that we need employees in all of these different areas. And the finance director said to me last week, "Do, do you have any budget analysts right now?"
Yes, but they're new.
They're brand new. You know, because they, her people go to Fort Benning as budget analyst and CSU. They had one to go to Harris County. But two weeks ago, she said, "I don't have any budget analysts." You know?
And, and we're trying to work within the new normal. I mean, we've, we've met with the Cl- uh, new president of Columbus Technical College specifically about mechanics, trying to work out some type of apprenticeship where they will be able to, you know, come to work for us. And I don't know, we, we could even talk about the possibility of some kind of tuition reimbursement in exchange for staying for a few years. That way, if you know when they get to a point where they can make more elsewhere, just keep the pipeline full. Keep folks coming in behind.
Right. Exactly.
And, and I will say this, I, I, I give the city manager credit. Even though we know that it's largely an economic, it's an, the economy is such and it's a generation, there's a lot of factors going in. When we have a lot of turnover like we've had, he's gonna ta- he's gonna do a deeper dive. Even though we, we suspect, we know that it's similar to what has happened in other areas, we're gonna do a deeper dive. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna try to figure out why a lot of these tenure. Because I tell you, it's not always about the money. Most of the time it is.
Yeah.
But there are other factors that we have to, when we see something like this, we have to try to take on and try to look and see if there are other factors that are, that have been involved. So, so, and he's done a very good job of that, I think, in just about every one of those areas where we've got critical shortages.
So, so we're, we're, on the mechanic thing, I wanted you to know that, I mean, it's a problem. And, you know, we gotta try and try-
Councilor Huff?
Just a couple of points. I'm glad to see us catching up. I got beat up really bad on this about three or four years ago.
Oh.
We had a lot of parking meetings, meetings about parking meters and things in the uptown area. And they were not quite ready for that because they thought the customer base would leave if they didn't have free parking. Um, some of the things I talked about three or four years ago was an incentive that we had back in the day. If you came into the uptown area and you spent a certain dollar amount, you parked free or discounted, some type of deal like that. The mention of the people who come in for the hair appointments, uh, it could be that they're spending over the dollar amount we probably have in place. So they could have free parking at the parking garage, a golf cart to take them to the door and deliver them back to their car without paying for valet parking. Um, and then one other point I thought about, if we could do something for the employees in the uptown area as far as having some type of discounted or free parking, that they have ID, that they actually work in the area. So that they have a place to put their car safely and...
At this point, uh, Councilor Huff, the proposal would be that they would have access to free parking all day and all night if they chose to in the, in the garages.
Good, good.
I think if, if we get down the road to the point where we had to meter the parking in there, then we do something to them, uh, with a very low or free decal. And we'd have to verify their employment periodically that, so they're not just getting decals for customers and friends. But, you know, you could, there's, there's systems for doing that. We had, we had decals at Tybee. Our employees had them. And what we did there was anybody that was a resident paid their property taxes in Chatham County and lived there in the home, we gave them one free decal. So they had a car they could run around, park anywhere they needed to. On the other hand, if they wanted to do an additional car, we would sell them one at a discount for a hundred dollars a year instead of a hundred and fifty. Now, for non-resident, uh, homeowners or condo owners, they had to pay for all of theirs. If they, if they wanted even the first one, they had to pay a hundred and fifty dollars because they were not contributing, you know, as- because they were not contributing, you know, as, as residents and taxpayers there. So you can work out systems like that that, that would be easy to do for the employees. We want to keep them, if we can get them over there, we want to keep them there, and it's worthwhile to do something to make that happen. Because we want a vibrant, uh, uptown area. I hope for too long we'll see the Liberty District and some of our other districts that will move to that point where they need to go that route. It may not happen right away, but it probably will in some of your lifetimes, may not mine.
Yeah, yeah. I think about it all the time because I was in, uh, San Antonio back in August, I was in Atlanta a couple of weeks ago, and even last year, and it's always meter parking, parking garages, but whatever, it's not free. So we need to do something to cash in on the revenue because we're growing and we're growing fast. Look forward to the work session. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Woodson?
Yes, I want to make sure when you come back, keep, um, one thing in mind, in the uptown area, okay, I'm sorry. I want you to keep, Isaiah, something in mind. In the uptown area, you're getting more people living there in the lots, and there are very limited parking for them, um, in the evenings. During the day, I guess they move around, and like one area has a small parking area, but in the evening, I notice lots of them park on the, on the streets. So we need to keep that also because we don't want to, um, deter it from that lifestyle. Um, it's a very nice lifestyle, so we need to be careful with that because things are changing, um, so that we continue that crowd coming down there. That was it, Mr. Mayor. Short and sweet. Don't forget my residence. And all of us need to be prepared, too. We're talking about we're agreeing this, we're talking that the businesses are agreeing, um, to a possibility of meters. Um, in uptown, again, keep in mind that we're going to have those that are going to, um, be against it, that our business is there. So let's keep our ears open for those comments, and, and once we have our work session, I think some of the discussion, we need to take it out, um, to the community, um, so we can get input back. I've always been a fan of meter, but I've gotten beaten up when I even thought about probably a tollway or charging people from Phoenix City to Columbus to help with the roads, and I got beat up really bad about that. So get ready to get phone calls from those who feel it's appropriate and some that feel that is inappropriate, and if we can all take that into consideration during our work session.
Counsel Woodson, I'd like to kind of comment on one thing you said there. One of the things that all the books on parking, all the guru's, people know a lot more about it than I do, way more. Uh, one of the things they talk about is that when you've got all these cars circling the block down there, you know, they're, they're emitting carbon dioxide into the atmosphere. It's not good, it's not healthy for the atmosphere to have that. That's one reason why buses today run a clean diesel fuel. It does not blow all that dark black smoke the way it did forty, fifty years ago. I know it still emits some, but you can do that with a bus because you're carrying a lot of passengers on it. It's less than it would be if each one of them were driving an automobile. But to have them just circling, particularly in your busiest areas down there, I mean, you can get to the point where it's really hard to breathe.
Oh, I, I don't have a problem, but I'm just being proactive in saying that, you know, this community can be interesting sometimes, and we need to make sure that when we do, it's inclusive. That's it. And I'm, I like meters, I, I think they're fine, but not everybody does.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Director Evans, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Well, I think everything is good with that. I would like to introduce briefly our staff.
Yes, absolutely. No, please do.
Extraordinary team. Um, we wouldn't be, um, able to do what we do every day. Um, they go above and beyond, and, and, and there's no way I could thank them enough for what they do to help me. And for those employees, of course, who can't be here, mechanics who are working, bus operators, frontline people, um, day-to-day service in this community, I, I want to say thank you to them. We do it on a daily basis, but publicly, I want to say thank you to the staff. And so if they will just stand, Robert Sheridan is our compliance officer. He came on board in March of this year and, um, doing a great job. Next to Robert is Ian Towers, new maintenance manager, came on in May of this year, um, came, he's, he's got his, you know, work cut out for him, but he jumped in and things are turning around. Nothing is happening quick, we don't expect it to happen overnight, but he's jumped in, uh, retired military, very disciplined, and he, he's, he's going to make a difference in our maintenance division. Uh, next we have Ms. Tarana Crawford, she's the new parking manager. She came on board with us, uh, this, in August, the latter part of August, and so she's learning the ropes of parking. Um, you know, we just, she's an asset. She came from a background of, of, uh, working in retail, and so she's, she's excited about what she's doing and learning in parking. And also, uh, next to her, we have Mr. Everett Fleming, he's our planning manager. Everett came on board with us about two years ago, he came on as the parking manager, and , uh, at that time, he, there was no one there to train him. He got in that office and closed his door, and he got busy learning parking. And right now, I go to him, and I've been there for thirty-one years, but I go to Everett when I have questions about parking. And so he's working with Ms. Crawford to, to train her. And next to, um, Everett is Mr. Jenkins, we call him Bill, William Jenkins, he's been with Metro longer than I have, probably, what, thirty-five years? Thirty-six years. And he's our paratransit.
How old, he, he was, what, eight, nineteen when he started?
When he started. Bus operator.
He was driving the bus when he was nineteen?
And so he, he, he does a great job with our paratransit, um, customers, and so we appreciate everything. You, you may not find him in the office because if, if there's a problem with the vehicle, whether it's too hot, he's going to get in his car and go to that bus to transport that person. And he's all over the place because he helps in fixed route side, and, you know, he's, he's just, he's great. Thank you all. And next to Bill, we got Mr. Antonio Orns. Mr. Orns has been with us about, gone on three years this year. He's our transit manager, he's over the fixed route, the big buses, uh, the bus operators. And so he's doing a great job with the turnover and, and has a great relationship with the, with the staff there, and so I appreciate him. And we have, uh, Jeremy Whittlesey, he's our transit specialist. Jeremy, this year will have been with us for three years, I think in October. Jeremy came on board and, um, the, the two planners we had for over combined thirty-five years had gone, and so they came back for a short period to help Jeremy, uh, with the process. And so Jeremy is very knowledgeable of our grants and planning division, and we rely heavily on him. Right now, he's, he's out on an injury, but, uh, we picked him up and he volunteered to come in case, you know, there were questions asked of you all, he would be able to answer those questions. But he is helping us and working, uh, from home. Um, and so we have Stephen Dewitt. Stephen, um, also transit specialist in our planning division, he primarily handles our T-splos and our quarterly reports that we, we work closely with finance. Stephen came on board with us, uh, he actually was promoted up from our maintenance area, and he's working back in the planning area. He's doing a great job, he's, he's our go-to person with the gin fair for the planning area. There's a section for operations, but he's our person for the planning area. So we have a great team, and I, I want to say thank you all so much for your time.
And Director Evans, thank you for your leadership. We appreciate you being here, and I know it's been a long morning, and, and I really want to thank our audit team because it's not always a popular job going in and, and looking for areas that we can improve upon, because I tell you, there's not a department in this, in this government that can't improve somewhere, somehow. So we're grateful to you for what you do. Mr. City Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we've already handled item one on my agenda, the retired health insurance plan, and so next I've got transfer of city-owned properties to Columbus Land Bank Authority. Uh, there are nineteen vacant city-owned properties, uh, we want to transfer them.
Motion and a second to approve, uh, any discussion? All right, uh, please cue it. Councillors, you can cast your votes, please. And that passes.
I've got a lease renewal, uh, with the Department of Natural Resources for the operations and maintenance of the boat ramp.
Motion and a second to approve the lease renewal. Any discussion? Any questions? All right, please cue it. Bruce, councillors, please cast your votes. And that passes.
Move item A through H.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any item that any councillor would like pulled for discussion? If not, uh, please cue it, and councillors, you can vote, and Mr. City Manager, if you would, walk through them while they do so.
Yes, sir. I've got gym, uh, floor maintenance for the various gyms that we have, gymnasiums at the rec centers and elsewhere. Uh, it's, um, for, um, maintenance service on a nas needed basis, it's fifty-five thousand three hundred dollars. Got mowers and tractors, um, they're six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars each. They're the commercial zero turn radius mowers, uh, and, um, they would be used, obviously, to take care of our grounds, uh, Public Works need those. Uh, I've got, um, mid-sized sedan, um, for a victim witness, uh, eighteen thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars. I've got fifteen-passenger van for victim witness, thirty thousand eight ninety-four. I've got replacement of playground equipment, Mayor and Council, for the Theo McGee Park. Now, this is a donation, uh, by, from Body Evolution Gym, and they are donating, um, for the purpose of re-equipping Theo McGee Park. Uh, and, um, you may recall that it was destroyed in a fire, uh, the park there at Theo McGee Park, and so they have stepped in, uh, and made this donation, and I really wanted to take the opportunity here, uh, to say to Body Evolution Gym, um, thank you. And I know that comes from you, Mayor, and the rest of the councillors we talked about yesterday.
Counselor Huff, I think, and, and a few of us attended the event when they presented the check. And this is just a, a, a group of individuals that, um, decided they wanted to improve their community, and they looked around, they saw what had happened with the, with the fire, and frankly, their intention is, their hope is, to have this be an ongoing initiative. Uh, I know Holly's been in communication with them, too, but, um, to, to try to make some type of difference, uh, in a way that encourages young people to be active. So Counselor, Counselor Huff, did you?
Just wanted to throw in, uh, to say thank you again, but they reached out to me yesterday, so they're at it again. They want to help out. So I'll be in contact with them this afternoon and then put them back in contact with our group, so we'll be able to see what we need. Thank you.
And Mayor F and G, uh, are just, um, repairs to buses, engines, and, uh, and then finally H is, uh, annual maintenance disaster recovery for Superior Court, um, and, uh, it's twelve thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, those are the purchases. And then, of course, I've got some, uh, updates, uh, Mayor and Council, and, um, we're going to try and keep these very brief. Um, and they said super brief, so first we've got our finance department coming on behalf of Parks and Rec, and then Holly Browder, our Parks and Rec Director, will follow her.
Who is it? Afternoon? Good afternoon? Okay. Um, so as you know, our fiscal year nineteen, uh, has ended, and our annual external audit is currently underway. Um, so hopefully this will be the last time that you see me regarding the FY nineteen budget until our annual audit, external audit has been completed. Um, some good preliminary news related to the FY nineteen budget is that our overall general fund expenditures, um, have come in under budget. However, with that being said, Parks and Recreation is here pursuant to ordinance thirteen dash thirty-nine, when a department exceeds its, or expect to exceed its budget appropriations. And so that's why, um, Parks and Recreation is here today, um, for the approximate amount of three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, the Director of Parks and Recreation is here to answer any questions, but just based on my conversations with the department, um, there were some last-minute unexpected and unprecedented expenses related to the International Cup at South Commons, um, and hopefully that event did provide to us, um, the economic impact that we were expecting. I can say that sales tax revenue for July was up, uh, eight percent. So, um, I would like to think that that had something to do with that, um, that significant increase in, in our sales tax revenue. Um, there were also some other general, uh, expenses related to the repair and maintenance at the pools. You know, we only have two pools open, um, currently, and so in order to keep the pools that we have open, open, there were some unrelated expense, um, unexpected expenses related to the pools that were, that occurred towards the end of the fiscal year, and our pool season doesn't open, it doesn't start until, um, May. So it's around the end of the fiscal year that we have, um, those pool-related expenditures. So again, um, our Director of Parks and Recreation can get in, more in the weeds if council, um, would like, but, um, they're here pursuant to ordinance thirteen dash thirty-nine. The, um, all of our expenses, almost all of our expenses for FY nineteen have been posted, so, um, there is no impact to fund balance. We're just here really as a formality in accordance with ordinance thirteen dash thirty-nine.
Any questions? Any councillors?
Can you give us the amount?
It was three hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Counselor Huff?
I just wanted to say, I think a lot of us had a chance to attend the, uh, USA Games. Uh, it was a phenomenal event. Uh, like I said, I missed because I was in school during the Olympic times, but it was just well-attended, um, and I was just impressed with everything that went on. And to watch the maintenance crew try to get it all right due to rain, due to this, that, and the other, to keep the fields in great playing condition. And, uh, I had a conversation with Director Browder because she had one guy that actually didn't have the mower pieces that he needed to get started, but he knew how long to take and take his sweet time to do it right and get the grass right in that outfield. And me being an outfield, I really appreciate what I saw because it makes a difference the way the ball rolls and bounces and things of that nature. But, uh, everyone seemed to have had a great, great time. Uh, it put Columbus all over the world. Uh, my brother called from San Francisco, he was watching the games on ESPN, so we, we had a good showing around the world. We looked good to the world. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. And I, and I think, I think I'm correct when I note that, um, had, um, Ms. Browder not had the foresight to use some of the salary savings for some critical, critical capital expenditures, she would have had the money to be able to absorb this, but, uh, being that this is sort of an unusual event, and we were able to get some of those capital items, that's, that's why there's a little shortage. And overall, as the finance director mentioned, uh, there will not be any, any negative impact on the budget. Counselor Huff?
Thank you, Mayor. You said the sales tax was up eight percent. Can you put that in dollars roughly?
No.
Send me an email message.
I can get that for you momentarily.
Okay.
I just remember the percentage, I just saw it this morning.
You need this?
Oh, nothing, that's something different.
Um, you don't need a vote from us or anything?
Well, we usually do a vote.
Do we? Okay. Counselor, what?
Second.
There's motion second. Counselor Thomas, you okay with that? Motion second to authorize that, um, overage. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
But, uh, Mr. Mayor, she'll get that information regarding the sales tax to the councillor. He, he wanted to know in dollars how much eight percent would be.
It's probably two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yes.
Genius.
Comes and goes, it goes more than it comes. Mr. City Manager?
Uh, I'm sorry, um, Mr. Mayor, um, so are we done with Parks and Recreation?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, so Claflin School Project update. Uh, Mr. Mark White and Laura Johnson is here.
Mr. White, God bless you. Thank you for waiting, sir. I appreciate it very, very much.
I, I, I'm here to thank you guys more than anything, so I, it's, it's a pleasure to be here.
Uh, Mr. White, if you just, uh, give us a second here, and we want to properly introduce you.
So Laura Johnson is here, but just to introduce, um...
So Laura Johnson is here. But just to introduce Mark, he is actually with the developer that's working on the Claflin School. And so we asked him to come and just give council an update on the school and the activity. If you don't drive down Fifth Avenue, frequently, you haven't seen the magnificent changes that are going on at that location. So we just wanted to give council an update on that. So.
Thank you. I usually wear a suit and tie to these presentations, but I am going in the field right after this meeting. So thank you all for letting me come and speak to this. I know it's been a long day. I'll go through this pretty quick. And it'll be going on for a short period, longer. I like this shot. I didn't take that. A friend of ours was doing the roofing, took that shot. To show where we are, this is, again, this has been a month ago, two months ago on the project. So hopefully, there'll be this big wow at the end when we look at where we are. I am Mark Wright. I'm an architect. And my company is doing the development, the construction, the architecture. We're not doing the management, gateway management's doing that, because we got smart a long time ago. But if anyone's not familiar with this, we're looking at the Fifth Avenue corridor there and looking north. This, ah, thank you. Okay. This is the other sheet that I want to do. If people aren't familiar with the project, it's a forty-four unit total project. There are four buildings. Two buildings are renovations, and two buildings will be brand-new. Twenty-six are in the renovation, which is the school, the old school. Two buildings there. And then out in front is the, does that work? Ah, no. Okay. Out front, there'll be a building, and in the back, there'll be another building. We just got these buildings turned over to us around February clearance from the EPA, after we did the abatement on the existing buildings. And then, oh, you're kidding. Cool. You should never give an architect the ability to draw anything. Should never do it. Gosh, that is cool. Thank you. Anyway, they'll, they'll go, the first building will be in there, and then the second building will be back there a little bit. But anyway, we just got these buildings cleared with the EPA. They were pretty much a catastrophe on the inside and on their last leg in February. And then we just got the clearance from the federal Parks Department to do the new buildings in May. So we're a little behind schedule, but we're making up time. And the important thing about some of this is just the idea of the project, what we're doing. Twenty-six renovations, threes, twos, and one-bedrooms in there. We also have a community building located in here. We have a gated courtyard, which will be secure in there. And you can see that, that, those beautiful, I don't know if you've seen them there, those are incredible magnolia trees that we are preserving to the nines. Those things are about eighty years old, and we are defending them to the end. So far, keep your fingers crossed, it's worked. But that anchors that courtyard between those two buildings. And we're going to have some covered seating, onsite laundry facility, washer-dry hookups in each one, typical stuff. But it's really going to be some decent, affordable housing for the community. We wanted to make sure everybody understands that we are reinvesting in the community. We promised to use as many local contractors as possible, and we are doing that. For instance, Concrete Environmental, the Survey, the Mason, the Framer, the lumber company, the flooring, our door suppliers, we're using as many local people as we possibly can to reinvest in this neighborhood. We promise we do that, and we're trying. And I think we're pretty successful so far. But just as an aside, on some of these projects, there've been a lot of studies done, depending on who you ask. But I think it was Vanderbilt did a study a couple of years ago that says that for every one point five million dollars spent on projects like this, these, these housing projects, affordable housing projects with tax credits, it generates one permanent job in a local community. Now, it doesn't sound like a lot, but think about it. One point five million dollars, every investment generates one permanent job. We can account for two permanent jobs on this project just off the top. We have a full-time manager and a full-time maintenance guy. So that doesn't count ancillary. That doesn't count restaurants and hotels. That is real jobs that are created. And we know, again, from our experience, how many that we have to have on these projects, and about eighty to a hundred during construction. So we are trying very hard. And I think it's, it's, it's just clear we're putting our money where our mouth is out there. These, these projects do generate dollars to this community. And on top of that, we're trying to revitalize the neighborhood and the area, and also remove the dilapidated structure. And of course, we're trying to preserve this iconic school, which is just amazing, the history. It's probably one of the most iconic historic buildings I've ever done. I've done it only about thirty-eight years and probably thirty structures. But this one, the significance of this is amazing by itself. The stories, people are coming by all the time and talking to me and telling me stories about this school and the history. So quickly, that's stuck on the page.
Hey, Columbus, Georgia. It's your girl Shirley Murdock. And I'm coming to your city on August thirty-first for Soul Fest two K nineteen, being held at the Columbus Civic Center. What are you waiting for?
You can tell how high-tech I am.
Baby, we are going to have a ball, y'all.
But really, the, the simple thing, Fifth, Fifth Avenue there, this will be one new structure, that's another new structure, then the, the outline of the old school is right there. Parking all around the school, just, just an idea of how tight this site is, and what we're trying to do, and how we have to pull it off, and the complications. This is the, the outline of the school, showing, just a quick idea, we're putting twenty-six units inside the building of the renovated structure. This one was the original nineteen twenty-five structure. Then this one was built in the forties. Two-story is built in the forties. The original school building was right there. That building was almost as tall or bigger than the three-story build, or two-story building that's there now, if you've seen old pictures of it. It was an old wooden structure that burned, but it is, it was huge. It was a huge building. But, but it's not there anymore, but the twenty-five school building is pretty amazing by itself. We go on to the next one. These are the, the two pieces that are going to be added, two small eightplexes, buildings that were approved by National Park Service. They're going to go, one's going to go in front, we'll show where that is a little bit. The other one's going to go behind the building. There'll be eight units in there. All first-floor units will be handicap accessible, which is something that, you know, we're doing here. And we also were able to provide two handicap-accessible units inside the existing school building for a little bit more diversity. The whole first floor of the school building, we've made accessible. But all the new units will be also. This, here, hopefully, this is the wow, okay? This is the fun part. I can go through these pictures quickly. This is the inside of the school last November, prior to the final WT Miller abatement on the building. You can see how close this building was to a complete loss. These are actually inside the building. Here's the, some more shots of the same structure. Both structures had, had such water damage, the roofs had failed, the walls had failed. It, it was just a tough, tough building to walk into. I call the one on the right my Wali shot, the little tree you can see growing in the middle of the floor there. It, it was pretty difficult to get in there and see this happening, but it was on its last leg. WT Miller, local environmental guy, did a great job for us. Again, we got EPA approval on this in February, you know, lead, asbestos clearance on this project. But you can see what was involved, just, just to go in there and take a look. Again, these are some of the shots of the early building, the way we found it. And you can see, this is the typical stuff that was going on. That roof had failed so bad that it caused inside damage, all the way to the footing, foundation, lower floors. That's how bad it was. And, you know, somebody, some people can question my judgment if I'm sane enough to take something on like this, but we decided to. Here's what it looks like as of last week. So the same shot you saw there, it looks like that now. We're ready to put our fire alarms in. We're going to be drywalling in this building next week. There's the hallways earlier, you know, you, again, we can go back real quick, and you can see what they look like there. That's what they look like now. Clean, we're getting ready to finalize the buildings. We've moved all of the, basically, the ancillary space, the service spaces to the corridors, so those wonderful, beautiful windows will be exposed into the whole unit, which this huge living space will be just illuminated by these old windows. The original ceilings are kept at twelve feet. No change at all to those. The original window sills will be kept. The original windows will be kept. The outside walls will replaster. These are the, the nineteen twenty school. So we're, at that point, we've refurbished all the old windows. The walls have been put in. That's drywalled right now. You haven't, you can't see it, but the next time you look at this, you'll see those hardwood floors underneath this thing, completely refinished and kept. These are the original windows, the original trim. We refurbished all those. This is drywalled. We're sanding right now. We're getting ready to paint next week on the, the older building. So I'm a little behind, but I'm still pushing. This is the interior that we discovered and we're working on. The, the center of the original school, they had some, this area was like the, the main gathering area. You can see some of the, the details, the columns we've, and headers we rebuilt. That's the rear, rear entry to the school. Again, that's a typical unit on the right-hand side, Laura. And then that's a picture of the beautiful courtyard that we have cleared out at this point. And we'll re-landscape all that. But there's one of the magnolias, and the other one's on the other side. There's a little pecan tree left in the middle. But we cleared that all out. It's leveled out. We've re-drained it. We're going to replant. That's coming up. Again, hopefully, here's the wow. That's the rear of the building. We've fixed all the windows. You can see we've got, that's the, the nineteen twenty-five building. This is the, this is even old now. We've already got the roof on. This was taken nine-four. We've got the roof on this building now, out in front. Again, and here's another view of the courtyard. This is one of those three-story buildings in the front of the building. There's where we are right now. That's how it's going to look. We've got along Sixteenth, Sixteenth Street, across from the old warehouse, across the street. There's a little bit of the building left. We've got another smaller building in the background. And then this is the, the new three-story building we're going to put in front. And again, it's roofed now, mechanicals are going in. That should be drywalling and bricking in about two weeks. Here's the, the way we took the school at the top. Hopefully, there's a little change at the bottom. We still haven't finished, but we've replaced the windows. We took the boards out, painted. At least it looks like a school again. And we'll have some other work we'll do out there, once we, you know, cut the grass, clean the yards up. But just the, I mean, just replacing the old windows and getting rid of the boards, I think, improved the look of that school tremendously. It added, I mean, it really brought it back to the way it was. And then, here's where we are right now. Sorry, it's not a great shot, but it was a little foggy that morning, and the sun was just coming up. But that's how we're, the, the building on the right is the, our building on the right is the original school building. And then the building on the left will be the, one of the three-story buildings, eightplex, that we got passed by Historic Preservation Office. And that will be all brick. So you, it, it's interesting to see this, because when we look at it, it, it just looks like the building fits and sort of, it'll blend in when it's brick. So it won't be intrusive to the, to the school at all. That's it. I know you've had a long day. I'm sorry I ran through this pretty quick.
No, that's awesome.
Apologize.
Councillor House has a question or comment?
I was involved with the Friends of the Star Claflin a few years ago.
I wanted to say thank you to everybody, but I want to get through this quick. Sorry.
I just want to thank you for what you've done, because it's great to see this-
Thank you, councillor.
-to, to come to fruition, and to start looking like the way we always wanted it to look.
We're trying. We're trying. And I'd like to come back and update you guys when it's not so long an afternoon for you all. And, but anytime you would like to come by, please do.
I think maybe we could try to arrange for council, maybe a site visit, when you get a little further along.
Yes, that'd be wonderful. We welcome that.
Councillor Davis?
Great work, Mark. You want to do the Government Center for us?
I'm sorry, sir. What's that? I'm sorry, what was that?
You're doing a good, you're doing such a good job. You want to do the Government Center for us?
Can I drive off one bridge at a time, sir? After December, I'd love to look at anything else.
That's awesome. I appreciate-
Let me, let me get off one bridge at a time.
Well, you put a lot, it looks like you're doing an excellent job, outstanding. It's great, great work there. I think councillor Thomas probably has another building for you, if you guys are interested in doing some more of this stuff here.
We, it's, it's what we do.
We'll give you a great deal.
We, we would love to look at it. Yes, sir. Love to look at it. Thank you.
Appreciate all y'all doing.
And thank you all for the help. We couldn't have done it without, before I leave, I have to say thank you. I have to say thank you to the city. I have to say thank you, Lord. And Will has to say thank you. And I'm kind of mad at Terry Vaughn for retiring from the city. So I, but I'd still like to thank him. And, and off, you know, it's just, it just goes on. Captain Turner, I don't agree with him all the time, but by God, they've helped me get this done. And I couldn't have done it. I could not have done this. We could not have done it without the city and the help. It's just too many people to thank. It's just too many people to thank. So, you know, I'm up here as a representative, but, but please understand, this is not a one-man show. This is really, takes a community to help me get this done. And you guys have been wonderful. So I'm just saying thank you. I know you don't hear that a lot, but, but thank you so much.
Thank you for your efforts. And I, and I agree with you. I think this council took a, took a chance. It was not, in some quarters, it was not that popular of a, of a decision. And it was a last-ditch effort to try to save a very important piece of the history of this community. And so I congratulate council for taking that action as well.
Me too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mayor, I've got Kyle McGee, who's the Assistant Public Works Director. He's going to talk about the solid waste management plan. And then he's going to talk about waste collection, Friday route change.
Kyle, last time you had two slides. Don't let me down, brother.
You just put the pressure on you.
Cal?
Okay, I'm going to go as fast as I can. I'm-
No, this information is critical. We're, we're making light of it, but.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to talk about the solid waste management plan. And this was my first and number-one priority when I came to public works. So I saw such a need for it. And consequently, it coincided with the expiration of our ten-year solid waste management plan. So basically, what a solid waste management plan, according to the Georgia EPD and Department of Community Affairs, not so much anymore, but it requires you provide three minimums. And these minimums are, you, you prove ten years of collection and disposal capacity for all the ways produced by your county. You also enumerate the number of solid waste handling facilities in your county. And you, you identify sites that solid waste handling facilities can be built on or in your county, and those that cannot. So with that, I'm going to click. So process and timeline. We started on the update of this solid waste management plan in July of last year. We've completed the draft in May. We briefed the city manager in June, and here we are today. Our next steps are to put it out to a public hearing, revise if necessary, and we'll be back for adoption. So today's presentation over the plan, we have our consultant, Abby Goldsmith, with Goldsmith Resources, to present on the changes from last year's, last ten-year cycle plan to this ten-year plan. So a lot has changed since then. We've closed some landfills. We've opened a regional recycling facility. So we'll just focus on those changes. So I'll have Ms. Goldsmith come up to the podium.
Thank you. There we go. Very good, thank you for having me, I wanna first of all, uh, thank the staff of the primarily Department of Public Works who put in so much time helping us decide what the goals and strategy should be, updating what the current system looks like, and these are the folks who provided significant input along the way from July till May this year, when we completed the first draft. Um, your last plan covered the time period from 2008 to 2018, the solid waste plans are a lot like your comprehensive land use plans you may be more familiar with, they're ten, they're on the same 10-year cycle. Um, in 2011, the state legislature way rolled back what was required of local governments in a solid waste management plan. Um, so really, that allows local governments in Georgia, rather than focus on what the state required, which was primarily a lot of content on what your current system looks like, we've now started cutting back that section of the plan, just do a brief description of what's been going on for the last 10 years, and then focus really on the future. So you'll see in this kind of update that I'll give you today, we're talking about the future and not looking at what you already have. So, one of the, really, the order in which we did things was, we established solid waste management goals for the next 10 years, then developed strategies to achieve those goals, and then with, within each strategy has, have a list of action items that have dates and responsible party, approximate costs, that sort of thing. So these were the seven goals that came out of all the work sessions with staff. Um, and I'm gonna go, I'm not gonna read them to you, because I'm gonna go through each of them and talk about the strategies and the action items behind them. As Kyle said, there's lots of them, and the solid waste management plan draft is now up on your website, if you wanna look at it in its whole glory, all the actions, but I'm gonna focus today on what looks different than what you've been doing the last 10 years. That'll shorten the time it takes me to go through. So goal one is to divert 40% of what's collected by Columbus or managed at its facilities. A lot of times, um, when I work with local governments, you don't have to have a reduction goal in your plan anymore, if you remember years and years ago, the state had a 25% reduction goal, and local plans had to show how they'd accomplished that or something better, um, or higher, that's no longer required. When we sat down and talked about, do we wanna even establish a reduction or recycling goal for Columbus for this next 10 years, the idea was really, there is a lot of waste generated in Columbus that you don't have control over, and unlike a lot of the counties I work with around the state of Georgia, it's hard for you to know exactly what that is because you're on the border of Alabama, and that means a lot of your waste goes to Alabama, and mostly what we find out about is from disposal facilities in Georgia, because they're the ones who have to report to the state of Georgia. And even if you knew what that number was, it's awful hard for you to have control over it. So we decided we should focus on the significant portion of waste that's either collected by Columbus or managed at one of your facilities, because that's what you can affect. So that's the goal for, uh, waste reduction and diversion. So here are, and I'm looking up because I've lost it on my screen.
Tap the screen.
Thank you, that'll save my neck. Um, so the first strategy under the waste reduction is to continue to operate and expand existing programs. So we looked at where they're weak, where they need strengthening, you may, I, you know, I'm open, you can ask me questions as we go, I'm gonna try and just summarize because there's so much detail, and recycling and solid waste management is very complicated, but basically, glass has been an issue for recycling in the single stream, which, when mixed with other recyclables over recent years, and a lot of facilities have cut it out of what was accepted. So, there's still a big demand for recycling glass, so the first action item on this list, for 2021 actually, was to secure a market for those glass items, but collect them separately. And we've got some promising developments for glass, uh, end-users and beneficiaries, beneficiaries coming into Georgia, so I think that's a feasible option as long as you keep glass away from the single stream. And so the Department of Public Works said, we wanna capitalize on those potential growing glass markets for material that's collected separately. So they'll never go back in your recycling container at the cart probably until we have much better technology to clean it up and sort it out, but your citizens still wanna recycle glass, so one of the first action here is to figure out how to collect it, process it, and get it to end-users in a way that they'll accept and the citizens would be satisfied with having access to glass recycling. The next has to do with being more, um, modern, current in promoting what's happening in your recycling programs, uh, Keep Columbus Beautiful does a great job getting information out there about how to recycle, why to recycle, stop littering, that sort of thing, so this focus is more on making sure the citizens of Columbus understand all that they're accomplishing when they do recycle. So show primarily social media, websites, things that can be regularly updated without much cost, to promote the success that you've done through your curbside program, through your drop-off programs, through litter cleanups, whatever, but promote that success. If that means tonnage diverted, great, if that means, let's say, how much impact we've had on greenhouse gas emissions, whatever, but you could monitor and show to the public all they're accomplishing by diverting and recycling. The next one is unique, um, I've worked on a lot of plans in Georgia and around the southeast, and this was something I think that was in Colum- in Columbus Public Works, Kyle's and Matt's head, is let's target a different material every couple years for diversion. You might know you have a mattress recycling program that was one of the first in the states and very unique, so this doesn't mean you'll be adding something to your recycling cart, but let's just figure out a way to divert one more material every couple years from the landfill. It may be a big volume item, or it may be something like mattresses that are just a real problem when they're in the landfill, and the Department of Public Works was very creative in finding markets for those items. And I don't know if you know, but your staff comes to national, state, and regional conferences to talk about Columbus's mattress recycling program.
If we could ban plastic straws, it sure would get my wife off my back.
Yeah, yeah, every, you know, every item you pick has its pros and cons of diverting. I know that's been a big issue lately.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, that's a big pro.
Strategy 1-2, dash, 1-2, to get at that 40% diversion, is to facilitate more recycling for multifamily and commercial generators, as you know, now you primarily serve residential generators with recycling carts, you do some commercial as well. I will tell you this, I'm also working on your rate study, which we'll talk about. The private haulers provide garbage collection to many of your businesses in Columbus, but you provide the recycling services, those recycling services cost money, and you're not charging them. So, one thing we noticed in the rate study, and tied it into the solid waste plan, is either, like in some places, whoever's collecting the garbage should also collect the recyclables, that being primarily the private haulers, or there needs to be a fee associated with those recycling services, as long as there's a cost associated to the city with those recycling services. Another idea is to, there's, uh, the Public Works is working on a convenience center at the, um, Pine Grove landfill, so that, there will be some space at that location for clean loads that have not necessarily be se- been segregated, that are coming into the disposal facility, for whoever's delivering those, to safely pull out some of the recyclables and send them to the recycling center instead of the landfill. Um, and lastly, uh, evaluate the op- the option of requiring all the private haulers to offer recycling services to those customers that they're collecting garbage from, and some communities do this, and implement it if feasible, again, pros and cons. Third strategy for diversion is to update the recycling facility to increase capacity and reduce contamination. You could see, this is one of the bigger, uh, bigger ticket items, but the bottom line is your recycling facility, that being the Recycling and Sustainability Center, is getting outdated as markets tighten, and if you're collecting this material, you wanna have the ability to turn it into something that can be sold. And to do that, you have to upgrade the equipment and some of the ways you're operating. I skipped strategy 1-4 because that's pretty much continuing something that's already been done, like I say, I'm, we're focusing on the new items. Strategy 1-5 focuses on diverting organics, and that right now is yard trimmings, but can also be food scraps, uh, sludge, that sort of thing. And you could see the actions here, um, look at expanding what you compost and mulch, and moving that operation, and you'll see, this is consistent with another goal as well, moving that operation, um, from, uh, granite bluff over to Pine Grove. And then you could see, little by little, as time goes on, continue to evaluate the costs associated with diverting additional, collecting and processing additional organic material beyond the yard trimming that you're mostly doing right now, and then implementing if feasible. Strategy 1-6 is to divert almost everything that currently goes to granite bluff, and you know that's primarily yard trimming, so if you are composting and mulching more yard trimmings, and as much of the granite, um, granite, as much of the concrete and rubble and that sort of thing that's going to granite bluff, by crushing and using it on-site, um, you'll be disposing of minimal amounts in the landfill, actually, and we have more about that when we talk about saving facility space. And strategy 1-7 is to make sure you've got the information you need to see if you're getting towards that 40% goal. Um, a lot of communities don't, we set goals and we don't have a way to tell if we're getting there on diversion. Uh, you do have the ability, through a permit process, to have the private haulers that are collecting from businesses and multifamily buildings and that sort of thing, to report to you through your permitting process, to let you know how much they're diverting, where they're taking it, where things are being disposed. As I say, we get reports from Georgia EPD, it's easy to access from the state about what's coming from Columbus, according to the haulers that's disposed in Georgia landfills, but if it's going to Alabama, there's no report. So having the haulers say what they're collecting here and where is it going, is a good data point to measure your progress. Goal two, to ex- this is related, right, to diversion, is to extend the life of your very valuable Pine Grove landfill, to save the space. And the goal, uh, for the Public Works Director and Assistant Director, is to make that landfill last all the way to 2066. Probably, few of you will be in office at that time, so that would be nice for it to last through your term. Um, strategy 2-2, again, we're skipping some that say, keep doing what you're doing, and this is how much it's gonna cost, but you can see it all online in the plan. Look at new technologies to divert material from disposal and implement where feasible. If you're like other elected officials in other communities where I work, you may be occasionally getting calls from some of the developers of these technologies telling you that they could solve your solid waste management problems, be more likely if your landfill was filling up faster and you were about to close, than you'd be getting a lot of these calls. Um, some of these technologies work great, some don't, some are pilots, some are commercially tested, some make a lot of sense where landfill tipping fees are $100 a ton, and not where landfill tipping fees are $30 a ton. Uh, but, it, the Department of Public Works is committed to take a look at these on a regular basis, looking at established criteria, for example, do you, does it have to be commercially proven on municipal solid waste in the com- community in the United States? Those are examples of what I see, uh, communities pick sometimes. Does it have to be cheaper than our landfill option, those sorts of things? But to evaluate those technologies periodically, really every couple years is about how fast things change, to see if there's a way to put less stuff in your landfill, thus making the life of what's there, the space that's there lasts longer. Um, fit more municipal solid waste that has to be disposed, fit more of it into that volume of space you have. Uh, and the best way to do it, and most, there's, there's two real kind of, you've got several action items, but they are in two areas. One is to continue to invest in compactors that compress things more, so you can fit more into a landfill. And the second one is underway, and that's to get a permit modification, so your stair-step side slopes of your landfill, which is how it's currently designed and permitted, instead becomes a slope like this, so you can fill in those stair-steps. It would like, be like filling in your staircase at your house to have a sliding board instead, and I think that's underway now. Um, on the same strategy, oh, nope, I think we covered that one. Goal three, this is one of the three things that's still required in your solid waste plan according to state guidelines, and that's to demonstrate that for the life of your plan, the 10-year plan, uh, all your generators, residential or commercial, have access to convenient collection, and that's to minimize illegal dumping, to, uh, littering, that sort of thing. So that is one thing that's still required. Um, this is really not new, but it's important to be on there because it's such a big-ticket item, and that's just to make sure that your collection vehicles, which really, seven years is about as long as you stretch the life, so, and we're paying close attention to this in the rate study, is to make sure you're generating revenue through rates, or landfill user fees, or whatever, so that you can buy those new trucks when you need to buy those new trucks. That's, and that allows you to make sure every resident in Columbus is still getting their garbage collected. Strategy 3-2 is to provide collection carts to all residents. Um, some have it now, some don't, most places, everybody has one of those roll carts that they bring out to the curb, it certainly is aesthetically better, it also keeps varmints out of your garbage when it's out there for collection, it also limits the amount of waste that residents can set out for collection, for the, for the base rate that they're paying the city of Columbus, um, and you'll see in the rate study, that makes a big difference Last, strategy 3-3, make sure those folks you don't collect from, the multifamily buildings, the commercial buildings, have convenient collection of municipal solid waste. Uh, this is done through your private haulers that do have permits, but those permit requirements need to be strengthened and enforced, and that's the first action item. You can see the second, third, and fourth one focus on looking at options for the Uptown Business District, and how waste should be collected there, who it should be co- who should do the collection, how should the materials be containerized to maintain the aesthetic and provide good service to those businesses? And you could see, it's sort of a three-year time horizon to evaluate, make recommendations to you, and implement better collection in the Uptown Business District, or more consistent, I guess I should say. Goal five, make sure that your solid waste handling facilities, and by handling, I mean the landfills, transfer stations, processing facilities, composting facilities, that's how they're defined in state law, um, conform to your city of Columbus's and the state of Georgia, and federal land use and environmental requir- requirements, and probably the most important reason you have the solid waste management plan, make sure any facility that's cited here is cited in a place and operated in a way that's consistent with what you put in this plan. And what this plan has in it, that you don't see in the presentation, is a process by which the elected body, you, would decide whether a facility is consistent with the plan that's now been written. The reason that's important is even though the Regional Development Center and Georgia Department of Community Affairs, and even Georgia Environmental Protection Division no longer reviews your plan, when they do look at the plan, it is because somebody has come in with a permit request for a facility in Columbus. So it could be somebody asking to put in a construction and demolition debris landfill, it could be somebody who said, I wanna put in a transfer station, another one, it could be somebody saying, I wanna enlarge the transfer station, it could be anybody, private or public, it could be you, who are submitting a permit modification for Pine Grove, for example. The thing EPD does use the solid waste plans for is they look there to see if it's consistent, whatever is being proposed is consistent with your solid waste management plan, they also will ask you, the elected body of the jurisdiction, for... They also will ask you, the elected body of the jurisdiction, for a letter saying, yes, this is consistent or no, it's not. So your plan contains very strict ways to determine whether it's consistent or not and whether you should issue that letter or not. It requires the proposer to actually first submit a statement of consistency and demonstrate all the things that are and aren't, both financially, environmentally, citing-wise consistent. So I guess what I'm saying is it's important that you know the process and the criteria to issue that letter and decide whether it's consistent or not. So the first strategy is to review the citing, design, construction, and operation of the solid waste handling facilities here, just, just to make sure the requirements meet what your expectation is for the way facilities will be cited and operate here in the community in Columbus. I noticed when I was looking at your development ordinance that you're pretty specific about things like landfills and where they can be and how they can be operated, but things like transfer stations, and I know you have one private transfer station located in an area closer to downtown here. It's not very specific about those kinds of facilities. So one of the things that we've put in the plan, an action item, is pretty, real quick, it's not a big change, but make sure you set the standards for where all kinds of solid waste facilities can be cited and how they have to operate, their hours, can they be near a school, that sort of thing, in your development ordinance. Goal six, move all solid waste handling facilities that you own, you operate, to Pine Grove. This is little. This is basically the same thing you've already seen on bringing the mulching and composting facilities from granite bluff over to Pine Grove. So basically, if you do all these things, you'll be accomplishing this strategy of consolidating and the goal of consolidating everything at Pine Grove. Just, but specifically, the intention or the public works desire, what they're suggesting, is that as you move all that management over to Pine Grove, you still keep the permit for granite bluff active and reserve that capacity, move 90% of the stuff out so you can reserve that capacity for disasters or overflow you have for some reason. So to do that, you just have to put a certain amount in it each year, but primarily, that's, the intention is to move 90% of what's there either for diversion or disposal at Pine Grove. This is a big issue for you and a lot of other disposal facilities, whether public or private, is to secure sources of daily, intermediate, and final cover. Always costs a lot if it's not on site. So the goal, the action items, and you see the schedule and the estimated cost, is just to locate the most cost-effective source of those materials, dirt primarily of a certain porosity or lack of, certain, lack of permeability to use as cover per Georgia EPD requirements. I think this is our last goal, to continue. This is kind of financially related. Make sure you continue to support solid waste management with the Enterprise Fund. In other words, make sure you're generating revenues from all solid waste services and facility that fully cover those costs so that none of, still, with the anticipation that none of that money would come from general revenue. The two action items strategies here are to secure sustainable financing for the capital needs, make sure everything in the cap, is clear and anticipated in the capital improvement program recommended to you. And then secondly, to make sure, and I'm not sure this has been done in this level of detail here, to evaluate the cost of every single service and every single facility provided by Columbus, decide which of the users should pay those costs and recalculate rates for the next 10 years, a 10-year projection of cost, revenues, and number of customers for that particular facility or service, and figure out what the rate should be. And that's something that we began to work on about the time we started the solid waste management plan. I think we've got our base case, but I think it's Department of Public Works' intention to wait until this plan is approved, till you say, yes, indeed, these are the things that we want to do, this is what we want to spend money on, and then we'll incorporate all that into the final recommended rates on the rate study. So I sped through, but you've been here a very long time. But I am happy to, Chairman, to answer questions, whatever, whatever you'd like, or take your time to look at, over the full plan on the website, whatever your preference is.
Any, any questions or comments? Ms. Golds, but I tell you, this is, this is really, really good information, and it's, it's something that is, is difficult for this council to hear because we, we work very, very hard in some rather confining, in sort of a confining environment when it comes to generating revenue. But we still work very hard to try to keep that, that integrated waste fee as low as practically possible. And I think what we have seen over the years is that there's a cost associated with doing that in that we have to try to buy a little bit more in bulk from some of our capital needs. It's, it's sort of a pay me now or pay me later kind of deal. And, and I know we've had counselors that have fought very hard to try to keep that as low as possible, but, but this is really solid information. I think that it's, it's much easier to try to, try to evaluate those types of things when you have some factual information in your hands. So, so thank you very much. I'm sure after we go through this again, we will have questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And so with that, Mr. Mayor and council, just one final thing. Public Works would like to make a route change, which would change garbage collection in one area from Friday to Tuesday or Tuesday to Friday.
Is that for the solid waste or is that for?
It's for solid waste and recycling.
Okay.
Good afternoon, I'm Rhonda Rice. I'm the manager of Solid Waste and Recycling Division. Thank you for hearing this item. You have a packet being passed out that has some information for you. And I'd like to start by addressing the map that you have in your packet. It would help as a visual to give you an idea of what section of Friday's route that we are going to be moving to Tuesday. So on your map, you'll see that there's a yellow area down at the bottom. Yes, that one. And that's just a good reference as we go through the slides. So the blue section of the map is Friday.
Are we going to put that up?
Actually, not quite yet. So on Tuesday's route, it is the smallest route of our week. We have a four-day collection week. We collect Monday, Tuesday on the west side at 1, I-185. And on Thursday and Friday, we collect on the east side of 185. Since Tuesday is our smallest tonnage or smallest route, and Friday is our largest tonnage, our largest collection day, we're trying to evenly distribute those two days. The reason we're going to do that is because, as you can see on the slide, Friday has the largest, which is 17,955 households, or, and the largest tonnage, 359, whereas Tuesday has the smallest. To evenly distribute Tuesday and Friday, the reason, the rationale for it is that we have a day in between, which is Wednesday, that allows us to be able to pick up any missed collections or run later into the evening and be able to go to the landfill to do the drop off of the solid waste and the recycling. So Wednesday is a buffer day for collections. Friday, since it's the largest day, we don't have that available. Saturday, we only have the landfill open one day out of the month. And so if we go very long, if it's a heavy collection day, either because of the holidays or because of special summer events, then we run later into the evening and we don't have the ability to go to the landfill to drop off that extra waste. So we're, what we're going to do is we're going to move some of that area to, from Tuesday to Friday. So we have a proposed 2,174 households that we're going to be moving. That's about 43 and a half tons of garbage.
So you're going to move it from Friday to Tuesday?
We're going to move, sorry, yes, Friday to Tuesday. If I said that the other way around, I apologize. We're going to be moving it from Friday to Tuesday. That'll have us, give us the ability to even out Tuesday and Friday. So we'll move that many tons in that many households on that map that you see that has the yellow section on it. We are going to move that from Friday to Tuesday. So Tuesday's route will be 14,910 households, which gives us about 268 and a half tons.
So, so the bottom line is that if you, if you run behind on Tuesday, you can go late into the evening Tuesday and still get to the landfill.
Correct.
And if you go late on Fridays, if you even it out, you can work late on Friday and still get to the landfill and not have to work Saturday.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. It gives us the ability to get to the landfill on Wednesday also, if we run too late after the landfill closes. So the new Friday route would be 15,000, so it's going to reduce it by 21,74 households. So it reduces it down, it allows us to evenly distribute that. And because the section on your map that you're looking at, that section right there, it is bordered by I-185, St. Mary's Road, and also the border at the bottom is Fort Benny. It's a, it's in conjunction with Tuesday. So it allows you to connect it to Tuesday, which is the green section on the map I handed out of. So it's easily connected to that, so it is not too difficult to get there as far as distance and time.
So it looks like, just for those watching, and hopefully they can see this map, it looks like Oakley Drive.
There is a enlarged map in your packet, if this one is hard to read. There is a large, enlarged pack, map.
Can we, can we use the telephone notification system in this area?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we can do that.
Counselor Huff?
Yeah.
That's correct. The blue area is Friday. We're going to pull it out of Friday and move it into the green section, which is Tuesday.
I believe Counselor Huff has a question.
Yeah. Okay, this is, this is my area. This is Washington Heights, Woods Plaza, appears to be Bunker Hill.
Can you put the list of streets up there?
What's that?
Do you have that?
No, I don't. But in your packet, you have a list of the streets.
And we'll put it on the overhead.
Yeah, I mean, I'm talking communities now that are affected.
The communities that are affected?
Yeah, the communities that are being affected would be Bunker Hill, Washington Heights, Cedar Hills, Mount Vernon, Coyle Creek.
Yes, the communities that are, that are south of St. Mary's.
Yeah, I know, I understand. It's District 3, though, I need to, I need to say this because I, Lexington Hills, all that, all that's over in my area.
And Counselor Huff, there's a, I hadn't put this list of streets. It's in the back of your packet there, too, but it's on the overhead up here on the screen.
Okay, I'm just looking at the yellow line because I know it well enough to know that that's Ridgefield, is Ridgefield Heights.
Yeah, but on the screen, I just wanted you to see those streets.
It's also in your packet.
I know, when we finish looking at the streets, it still falls in these areas.
When will this start?
So implementation.
Question before we get to implementation. I'm trying to figure out why no one talked to me about this before we got to implementation, so that I could at least have the opportunity to talk with District 3 about what was coming.
Well, Counselor, let me, let me just say, when we bring, and I understand that maybe we should have had someone come and talk to you, and I notice you says, we're going to do it, this is proposed. And of course, we are governed and directed by this council. And so this is what is being proposed, and they're just providing justification, and perhaps they should have gotten with you to say, this is what we're going to propose.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just at a point where it's not necessarily that I'm against it, it's just the fact that it's like twice in a week, in a couple of weeks now, that I just hadn't known some things. And I think it would be better proposed, better presented, for me to be in the room sometimes when these discussions are being had, to have the opportunity to get to the district and let them know it's coming.
Okay.
It's easier implementation for the district to say, I know it's coming, I understand there's 12,000 here, there are 2,000 here, I'm bouncing out at 14,000. You know, these, these are not hard numbers to digest here. It's just, I'm saying to me is, I walk in today and out of the entire city, I'm hit with this, and I'm sure it works well, but I needed to know how it works. And I'm hearing now why, why you got to this point and how you got to this point by me, I'm just hearing it. And it's nine o'clock this morning, it's now, whatever time, afternoon, 1:26. And I'm saying, this is just a discussion that should be had ahead of time. You all do great work, and I'm sure this is something that will benefit the city, but I don't need to be hit with phone calls this afternoon about why, 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 why?
Well, and Counselor Huff, again, and I appreciate and understand what you're saying, and we'll have to take that into consideration in the future.
I'm not, I'm not hard to get along with, I just need to know.
I know you're not, and we want to make sure we get along with you.
Yeah.
But this is proposed, and if, if more time is needed on an implementation date, that, I mean, that's fine to give, you know, because, but, you know, to give you time to talk to your constituents.
I would like the opportunity to have them to come out and have a district meeting for them to explain to the district.
And we can have that done as well.
Okay.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you.
And, and this should have proposed on it, and it doesn't, but because we want, we try and do things, you, you know how we do them, we'll come to you. Rather than put something on for a vote, we come to you and talk about it the week the meeting before, and then we bring it for a vote the next time. And so we're not coming to you, I don't mean to come to you saying, this is going to be done, we want to hear from you as well. It's your district.
Yeah.
These are all of your constituents in, in some way, and, and so we want to do what makes it easy and what's best for you. And so we should have done that, and I apologize.
Yeah, I just think it'd be easier going forward if we just start on the front end so that the people of the district can say, constituents can say to us, you know, we're with you 100%,
Okay.
or this works better on Friday for me because of this, that, and the other. And then you can say to them, these are the problems we're having.
Okay.
And this is why we're trying to implement the change, because this will give us a better chance to get to the landfill, this would be a better chance not to have overtime, whatever.
Okay.
Conversation needs to be had.
Totally understand.
Okay.
So, you know, if you want us to schedule a meeting, we can get staff to do that in the district
Yeah.
and then come out and share it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
You want to proceed on?
Okay, so for the public outreach, what we had planned was not implementing until October 30, 21st? Yeah, October 21st. So we're looking at six weeks out to give us time to do the public outreach. That is necessary to make sure that the constituents and the citizens are ready for the change. What we had planned.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, in, in the presentation now, it's being presented to the public that we have time to have meetings, and implementation is to take place in October.
Right.
I'm saying it should have been, we have the meetings, and all that should have been said in the meetings, that we're proposing October, whatever date. And when we left the meeting, and you approached us this morning in the council meeting, then it sounds better to them because they've heard about it already. Because even now with the meetings, you're still saying implementation October, so if we run into a bump in the road.
And Counselor Huff, I get it, and let me take responsibility for that.
Okay.
Because typically, when staff, I want you to know, bring things to me, I'm the person who's supposed to be the critical thinker and think through all of that. I missed it. And so I take responsibility for that.
You know, I just want you to know, nothing personal.
No, no, I understand.
But there are 23,000 people, they all don't vote, but they all But there are 23,000 people. They all don't vote, but they all complain.
Thank you. Well, but I think this, this is still good information, because you just forget the date.
Yeah.
Just talk about the process that you're going to use.
Right. And, and so, and, and frankly, I'm glad we're having this conversation, because, you know, when staff come to me with these things, I'm that critical thinker, ask all these crazy questions, and they wonder, "Why is he asking that?" You know? But it's my job to anticipate what you're looking for, and then make sure we get it to you in that way. I missed this one. So I take responsibility for that.
So we propose, propose this date if it all goes well. And what we'd like to do is use CCG's Public Outbroad, Broadcasting Services. 311 is a very good resource for us. We also have availability of Twitter and the social media to reach out to the citizens. We're looking at doing a, since it's twenty, little over, almost 2,200 households, we're looking at doing a postcard directly to the household, and also doing a can sticker. So a sticker that we can put on the garbage can to let them know, or the recycling can, to let them know prior to the event that the, the route change is going to happen. So we also are going to be doing radio ads, just to make sure that we've covered all of the media sources, and make sure that the households are ready for that change.
Also probably need to keep 311 on standby, so they'll have a, probably a little uptick in calls, no matter how thorough you are.
Right.
And then have a few trucks on standby that can go pick it up for the people who put it out there on Friday. Yes, sir.
Okay. Is it possible on the sticker that you will place on the cans to mention the meeting, once we set it up, the date? So when they pick up the cans, they'll know a meeting is coming?
Yeah. Uh, you just asked when you put the sticker on the can.
Mm-hmm.
And you say what, then, you know, something that says, you know, if we've got meeting dates or whatever.
I think the sticker is just one week.
Yeah.
Oh, it's just one week, huh?
It's just going to go out, well, we're going to try to put the sticker out one week prior.
Oh, the stickers, okay, okay.
Yeah, one week prior. That's kind of like the last ditch effort, very bright sticker of saying, "Don't, don't forget."
So we have to go through traditional means, yeah, of, uh-
After we've gone through.
CCG TV and-
Mm-hmm.
And we'll use the call system.
Right.
Okay, okay.
Counselor? Counselor Thomas?
I would suggest that you not wait one week before, before you put on the sticker. That you put it on earlier so that people will, you know, I take out my garbage can every week, and so if you put it on there one month prior to that, for four times, I will see that and maybe, you know, get it in my mind. But I, I would just suggest that you not wait till one week prior before you put the, because that's the only notice that some people are going to get.
Mm-hmm.
No matter what else you do, that's the only notice they're going to get. And Mr. City Manager, I would also like it if you can to have some of this put into a, a social media platform and given to us, so that we can put it on our social media accounts, as well as the city and, and whomever else. You know, just, the more you get it out there, the better I think it will be. So if, you know, it doesn't need to be, it, it needs to be the map. I think it needs to say when it's going to happen. They're not, they're not necessarily, most of them interested in how many tons of garbage you're going to, they don't care. "When are you going to pick up my garbage?" is what they want to know.
Right.
And so that's what we want to know. And where are you going to make this change? So if you could do some of that for us, I think it would be-
Yeah.
-helpful, as much information as we can get out ahead of time.
Yeah, we will.
Okay, we'll do. Thank you.
Counselor Allen? Whoop, hang on. There we go.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I've got a concern about the radio advertising. I know that Counselor House and Thomas and Huff are in, tuned into this, but if you start advertising and it's not specific enough, and it's, you know, people hear part of the message, and recycling's going to change on a pickup day, and then all the rest of us start getting calls about what, so I, I would not, I would prefer that you not do radio advertising, but I understand, you're trying to get the message out. I would prefer maybe one or two mailouts, and then the stickers.
Should be visual.
And the public meetings should, should suffice, rather than stirring up everything else around the city, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
We made notes of that.
Yes, sir.
I was just going to mention, we, we've done our research in what works for us and what doesn't. What works for us is if we put something in the hand of every resident. And when you do make broad changes, that, the whole city gets the message, but it's only for a certain population. So the hands-on sticker approach is our, our best solution.
And then the call, yeah, and, and then the call notification.
The call notification to that resident only.
Yeah. But, but I think we understand what you're, that you're pulling.
And mail, the more stickers we put out, the more expensive it is. You know, we have holiday schedules. We have issues that come up throughout the year. We have a budget for advertising. And we've, we're going down the social media sticker type program this year to educate on recycling and other things, and this being one of them. So y'all look forward to-
Highlight the map, the social media word.
Yeah. Yeah. So we're going to spend more of our money and time on that, and I think we'll get a bigger bang for our buck if we do.
We have another comment from Counselor Huff?
Yeah, I'm looking at this because I don't think we will confuse the public to where, because this seems to be only District Three. So we need to tag it as such. We can sit and talk about it, but this seems to be a District Three issue. Yeah, it'd be District Three, St. Mary's Road, and if I'm looking at it correctly, it's everything on the, um, south side of St. Mary's Road?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's all District Three, because the north side is District One.
Right. It's all south of St. Mary's Road.
All south of St. Mary's, okay. Okay, so it's a District Three issue. So I guess we need to tag it as such, when you get the message out, it's District Three that needs to be concerned about this.
District, District Three, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay.
Was there anything else?
Nope. Any questions?
I think we've got-
None left.
The message.
Thank you. Appreciate the innovation, though, trying to, trying to find a better way to do it, so.
And to Counselor Huff, we'll get better at it. We'll get better.
Hit you like there.
Mr. Mayor, last subject, Government Center Splot Update. The deputy city managers will talk to you about that. And it's a, it's a light presentation, so we shouldn't be here alone.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Deputy City Manager Goodwin and I are going to kind of tag-team this presentation. We've been working together as far as the Government Center and the Splot, so we'll both be making a portion of this presentation. But just as a reminder, we're working through the planning process for the Government Center study, as well as moving forward with the Government Center. The RFP for the Design Services has been released. The proposals are due back this Friday. And so the evaluation of those proposals to make a recommendation on the design team will be coming forward sometime in end of October, first of November. And we're also planning to release the RfQ for the Construction Management, the CM at Risk. That will be going out hopefully this week, and moving that forward, hopefully having a selection and a recommendation to council in December time period. And we're also working on the Project Management, RFP, and that will follow right after. The options that council has approved for the design team, as well as the CM at Risk to study and provide additional detail, includes what we have selected as Option Two, which is new facilities on the existing site with the demolition of the existing facilities there and new construction of a judicial and admin building on that site. The other option to study by the design team would be a new judicial center, admin building, and a parking garage on a new site. So those are the two options that will provide additional detail through the design team and the CM at Risk. Also looking at the Government Center Restoration feasibility. And we talked about this at multiple meetings, about all the things that will need to be considered in that restoration process, just cost of relocation, how the retrofitting will take place, the security at a temporary location, relocating the IT department. All those things will be considered, and those, that information will be provided back to council. The final option that we will be studying is to look at advertising the Government Center with conditions, to see if there's any interest in pursuing that as an option. That will come back to council once we have identified all those conditions, to make sure that council agrees with the conditions that we will advertise with the Government Center. And I'll turn it over to Deputy City Manager Goodwin, just to, to kind of talk about the Splot process and where we're at in that process.
Counselor Davis?
Go back a minute, just, just to highlight, I know you, the feasibility study encompasses more, encompasses more than what's up there. I know that. But I would ask just to, if y'all would really, really focus on any additional cost outside of what would be covered in the Splot, meaning that this city government would have to cover it out of either general fund or the, the reserves. I know it's going to be hard to do, but there's a lot of moving parts to this, so we just, that's an extremely important point to understand, the limitations of, of what funds are available.
Sure. We'll make sure that's-
And how that would, how, what you're talking about is going to impact it.
Good.
Good afternoon. Early last year, around January of last year, we came to you, provided you with this document of unedited projects from the various departments. We asked them to, again, when they came forward and provided this list to us, it was based on an assessment that we did of every facility in terms of, in, in this government, over 600 facilities. And when we took a look at that, that helped us to determine some of those needs. And so the departments were then asked to put together their wish lists, if you will, of those things that could be potential Splot projects. And that's what we provided to you back in January. The list that you have here today, they have updated that list, and I won't go through all of the actual, the amounts, but I will just kind of, uh, highlight a few. One, of course, is Fire EMS with over $83 million in potential projects. The Police Department, over $19 million. Then we have the Sheriff's Office, oh, almost $123 million in potential projects. Parks and Recreation, $156 million. Then Bull Creek Golf Course, $7.4 million. Information Technology, almost $30 million in projects. Then we have, of course, Engineering, $194 million in potential projects. And so we are looking at, based on what those departments have provided, and, and of course, these are just, we've just asked them, we didn't take anything off the table. We just asked them to give us what you think your department needs. We're talking $650 million in potential projects for this special purpose local option sales tax. We, we know that what we have to do, and I know the city manager may hop on this just a little bit, that, you know, this is our list. We don't know what the public would want to see from the departments or on the list for Splot. But this is what the departments have provided to us. We did not want to remove anything, but we wanted to share with you just what they had asked for. Now, we also asked the departments to put together a prioritized list, that same list that they provided to us. Now give it to us in priority order. And just to highlight just a few of those, and you can see some specific projects. For instance, here with Parks and Recreation, their number one was all restrooms, redoing all the restrooms in the parks and in the trails, on the trails, $11.2 million. A.J. McClan Memorial Stadium, $20 million. Flat Rock Park, New Water Parks, Lake Bottom Park. And there is that amount that's associated with each of these. This is their priority list. But again, we know all of that can change once we go out to the public, to hear what the public would like to see. Police Department, their number one is the expansion of the parking garage at $5.2 million. Then, of course, redoing the second floor walkway. Mechanical and interior finishes and renovation, $4.5 million. And then, of course, the North Precinct.
Deputy City Manager, excuse me.
Yes.
Counselor Woodson?
Deputy City Manager Lisa, I have a question for you. Can you go back to the slide for Parks and Rec? I know years ago, there was someone interested in, in the water park coming to Columbus. Is that part of that?
No.
Item, or is that separate? What are we talking about there?
This is what we've been talking about. When we've closed the pools just a couple of years or so ago.
Yes.
Uh, we talked about changing those particular pools into water parks.
Okay.
Just splash, splash pads.
Oh, okay.
So that's what we're talking about.
Like the one that's in Uptown? Similar to that? Similar, more or less. Okay. I thought we were talking about a water park coming to Columbus. Okay, thank you.
Engineering, some of their top priorities. Resurfacing throughout the community, $30 million. The Forest Road Phase Two project, Benavista Road and Wenton Road, and then, of course, the Williams Road project.
Excuse me. Counselor Thomas?
And Deputy City Manager Goodwin, I want to make sure that, that people understand very clearly that these are not in any way projects that have been approved.
Absolutely not.
The people who have talked to me about Parks and Rec projects do not want splash pads.
Right.
They want a swimming pool.
Yeah.
And so at some point, we're going to have to make those kinds of decisions. I have seen too many times, when lists like this get out, people assume this is what we're going to do.
Yeah.
And this is not what we are going to do necessarily.
That's right.
We have made no decisions, and I want to say that over and over and over and over again.
That's right.
And when you say $650 million, that does not mean we're going to ask for $650 million.
Absolutely not.
You know, so just, I guess, every other sentence I want you to say, "This is not written down anywhere."
Yeah, that's right.
So, I mean, it's, it, I think it's really important that we keep-
This is a list of potential projects, so the public will give us feedback.
Yeah, let, let me just say, again, and, um, she came to you in January with that list and gave you a book. And we're coming today because we want you to know that, you know, we are communicating with the departments. This is unedited. We can't, this, this is not for $650 million. That's just, if, all the needs that we have, if we gave the departments everything that they think they need, it would amount to $650 million. What we plan to do is use that list when we go out to the first round of meetings, a series of meetings. There may be 10 of them. And we want to say just what we said to you. Here's a list of all the stuff that city departments said that they're interested in, unedited. You take that list, and you mark all things. You can put things on a list over here that you want to create, and we're going to do, go do 10 meetings. And whatever they said, the public in your districts or whatever, that they want on that list is what will appear on the list. If they say that we don't even want to entertain water parks, that's not on the list, if the public says that when we go out. These are just projects that let them know what department he is think, and to get them talking and discussing in those series of meetings. And after we've gone out to however many, eight or 10 series of meetings, and we've heard from them, then we are going to package all of what we think we heard, just like we did the last time around. And we're going to go back to them, and we're going to say, "We did eight meetings, and here's what you told us you want on this A-list. And here's what you told us you don't even want to talk to us about anymore, off that list." And there may be an A-list, or B-list, or C-list, and a D-list, but the A-list is what they would be focused on, based on what we heard from them. And we want to make sure, from them in the second round of meetings, that we got it right. We got exactly what you said to us. got exactly what you said to us. You know, and we can tell you what meeting we heard this at, and what meeting we heard that at, and how many people, and here's the list. And, and at that point, they, really, in the second round of meetings, you know, they need to start prioritizing, and say, what's, what makes a difference to them. And so, when they have prioritized, and we told them that this will be A, this will be B, C, and they all agree, then that's when we're going to come back to you, the council, and say, we've had 20 meetings, first round, and the second round, and here's what we said, what we heard. And then, we need council to determine whether you are going to approve a list that you, that we heard from the constituents.
Well, to put it, to put it more bluntly, there will be people in the media, both social media and, and traditional media, that may in fact say, council is asking for, they are wrong, and they're misleading people if they do that. This is not what council's asking for.
No, not at all.
This is a, this is a long list of potential projects, they can pick one, all, or none. Well, they can't pick all, we're not going to raise that much money. But they can pick one or none. I mean, they may come back and tell us something else. But anybody that says, we are asking for this, is wrong.
Yeah.
And we need to say that, I think, over and over again, so that people will understand that this is not the list.
That's right.
These are some ideas, thoughts, suggestions, whatever.
We, we think we owe it to you, the council, to let you know what we heard from the departments, unedited. We could have edited this thing, and, you know, but that, you wouldn't want us to do that. So it's unedited. It's everything that they could think of, to include kitchen sink. And some may be priorities, some may not be a priority at all, and shouldn't even be on that list. But it's everything. And so, the, the citizens will decide what's on the list, not me. Yeah. So we just want to be clear about that. Mr. City Manager, just to, just to add to this, I know you're really clear in what was presented today, and, and where this is going. But, you know, it's really important that if we're going to do this, we've got to do it right.
Yes.
And, you know, and I would kind of maybe take a simple approach, and break it down in simplicity. It's just, you're going to have to, we're going to have to put ourselves in the shoes of the, of the taxpayers, of the citizens of Columbus, the laymen, the laywomen, the laypeople out there, the, not the, you know, we're talking about government, government request, or wish list, so to speak, is what's being presented. But you've got to, we, you, you're really going to need to focus on what you can see, touch, and feel. And when I talk about that, the citizens, what they, they drive on roads, they, they take their children to the parks, they play, they run on the Riverwalk, they, you know, the, the things that they're involved with every day. And what I hear from them, the real needs that they see, they may not see what our, our people inside that work for the government, what they see.
Right.
Even though I'm not saying that, that there's no merit there, that it's not warranted, that there's a need. What I'm saying is, from their eyes, because they're going to be the ones that are going to be voting on this, but it's the stuff they see, touch, and feel every day, the roads, and, you know, those kind of, those kind of things out there. So, you know, that's a lot of, 650 million, that's a lot of things. And, and then to add, what we as council members hear from our constituents. You know, I still have some things that, that need to be put on the list. And maybe one of the things today is, we all need, if you've got stuff that you're hearing from your, the people you represent in your district, you know, is to go ahead and get that list and...
That's right.
And submit it, so they can kind of...
That's right.
...fuse it into, to what's being presented here. And if we get that from you, it's going to be added to the list. I mean, it's just going to be, it's a list of things, and whoever, I mean, when we go out there, that, you know, they'll have the whole list, you know, everything we've ever heard from you or them, and, and then, you know, in that first round, and then, and they're going to tell us. And we're going to put on the list, what they tell us, you know.
Right, right. And honestly, it's just envisioning, I tell people, you know, envision being able to upgrade your, upgrade your city to the next level for the next 15-plus years.
Yeah.
Those kind of things, are where we can't maintain, or upkeep, or the, the things that have depreciated, or deteriorated.
Yeah.
And will continue. I mean, just getting them back in a good shape, where, where our city shines, and competes with the rest of the state, as well.
Yeah.
This is no new stuff. This is back to basics.
Yeah.
Yeah. Building and refurbishing.
Yeah. Deputy City Manager?
So, just a reminder of our current sales tax rate, and the components that make up the sales tax. The first three lines, the state, the lost, and the oh-loss, those three are all permanent. And so, that makes up 6% of the total sales tax. Currently, there's an East SPOST, the school district has. The T-SPOST, it's a regional T-SPOST, which makes our current rate at 8%. The, the East SPOST will expire at the end of June, which would take us to a 7% come July 1st, beginning in April, if the SPOST is successful. On November 3rd of 2020, starting April 1st of 2021, it would revert back to an 8%. At the time the T-SPOST expires, which is December 31 of '22, we would be back down to the 7%. This just provides the history of the different sales tax that we've had, that's been approved by the voters, that when the lost and the oh-loss were both implemented, the time periods, effective dates, and the end dates of the East SPOST, as well as SPOST that we've had in the past, and the current T-SPOST. And this is just the reminder of our SPOST timeline, that we're working towards a November 3rd, 2020 ballot. Our first series of public meetings, which the city manager has referenced, will start at the end of October. We're working through that schedule now. We'll definitely get with each one of the counselors for that district, to make sure that it works with your schedule, as well as the counselors at large, for those meetings as well. We'll start that, hopefully, within the next few weeks. We'll get with you on that schedule that we're proposing. And we want to make sure that we have an interactive process at the public meetings, and also to get information from those who are not able to attend the meetings. So we're working on that process for those public meetings. We'll come back with a second series of meetings, as the city manager suggested, to make sure that what we heard from them is accurate, before we come back to council with the presentation in July, and the resolution as well in July, for the call for the election, the 1st of August. So I'll be happy to answer any questions about the process, or the information that we presented today.
And so, Mr. Mayor, when we come back at the 24th meeting, we're going to, the process that I attempted to outline verbally today, we're going to write it down, so that if there's anyone who questions, who's going to develop the list, and how it's going, you know, it's going to be what I outlined, it's going to be, you know, we've got a list of projects, that came from department heads, they've prioritized some projects. The entire list, unedited, will be shared at the first round of meetings, as we go to every council district, or whatever we decide we're going to do. And the citizens will look at the list, and they will pick and choose, and add to, or whatever, delete, whatever they want, and they will come up with a list. And we'll have eight or 10 meetings in the first initial round, and then we'll package everything we heard from them, from all of the eight or 10 meetings, or however many meetings. And we'll go back with a second series of meetings, and we'll tell them what we heard from them, and we'll have documentation to support, that, yeah, this is what we heard from you, and this is the list that we created, based on what we heard from you. And that list, once they confirm, yes, that's what you heard from us, that's good, then we'll come to council and say, here's the list of projects that we heard from citizens, your constituents, and then, it's whatever your pleasure is at that time. We will outline that process.
Okay. Any, any further questions or comments from council? Don't appear to be any.
That concludes my agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the clerk's agenda, the first item is a resolution to excuse mayor pro tem.
I move items one, two, and three.
Motion second, approve items one, two, and three. Any discussion? Hearing none. Bruce, you'll cue it, or you want to just do a voice vote? Okay. Well, just, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They're approved.
Item number four, minutes of various boards.
Motion second, receive the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They're approved.
Next, we have board appointments, Mr. Mayor. For the Columbus Jaguars Convention and Trade Center Authority, Mr. Mayor is nominating Dr. Shakia Shaw to succeed Helena Coates. She may be confirmed.
Confirmation.
Motion second to confirm Dr. Shaw and Mr. Burgess.
I will move, uh, Mr. Burgess.
Okay. Motion second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They're confirmed.
Next, we have council appointments to be confirmed. First, we have the Board of Water Commissioners. Counselor Thomas has renominated Rebecca Rumor to serve another term of office. She may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Rumor is confirmed, to serve another term.
Next, we have tree board. Olive Kendall was nominated by Counselor Huff.
Quick comment.
Counselor Huff?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I apologize, Madam Clerk. I was having a conversation with the city attorney and some others. Let's hold this for one more week, and let me get with her, because it's come to my understanding, that it may be a better fit where she is, and I may need to get someone else for the tree board. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Huff. Next, we have council district seat appointments, for the Public Safety Advisory Commission, for Council District One, Council District Three. Counselor Huff is nominating Mr. Noel Danielitz, and he may be confirmed.
Confirmation.
Motion second to confirm. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? He is confirmed.
We also have council District Seven, that's open for nomination. For Youth Advisory Council, we have District Three. Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. For the Animal Control Advisory Board, we have two seats that are open for nominations. We also have the Personnel Review Board. We have one vacant seat that's being presented, that is open for nominations. And, Ms. Mayor, that's all I have.
All right. Counselor Woodson, do you have a comment?
Yes, yes, Mayor. Thank you very much. Just want to remind everyone, unfortunately, I don't know what happened. In the public agenda today, Christian Ortiz was supposed to be present to invite council and the public to the Tri-City Latino Festival, which we are very proud to announce, we're on our seventh anniversary. Thanks to the city, and the mayor, and, and our colleagues for supporting it, it will be held on September 21st, 2019, at the Civic Center Grounds, on South Common, from, from 12 to 8 o'clock in the evening. It's a free mission. The purpose of the festival is a gathering of family, a family event, networking, and educational, to educate the Latin community, because within the Latin community, there are 25 different ethnicities, cultures. They, just because we all speak Spanish, the words don't all mean the same thing. And the food is very different from one culture to the other. So, the topic...
Judy Ella.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Judy's always been a great sponsor of the festival, and we truly appreciate it, year after year, since the conception of it. The whole idea is to network the community as a whole. It's really an international festival, what we call it, the Tri-City Latino Festival, to give the Latin community of Columbus one day of feeling inclusive. It is supported by Columbus for Benny and Phoenix City. It's, the music's bilingual, in Spanish and English. Between 12 and 5, after 5, we bring in international artists, Latin international artists, who are previous Grammy winners, very artists that do draw people from all over. We get people from Savannah, South Carolina. We have people that plan their family vacations around this time, so they can be here. The food is all the way from American food, all the way to Spanish food. We have a kids zone to entertain the children. So, in behalf of the Tri-City Latino Festival, I would have preferred they were here to do it, but just want to say, thank you. You're all invited. And in the future, attend our press conference. You'll have lots of fun. The mayor can, can tell you a little bit about that. It's not your normal press conference. And council member House can too, because they were both very surprised. And I'll let the mayor tell you his little experience on that. But I just want to publicly say to everyone, thank you. We appreciate it, and we hope to see you all out there. We get about, last year, we had close to 10,000 people, right, Lisa, something like that? So it's getting bigger, bigger every year. We have people now asking us for next year, because they have conflicts with their schedule. So it's really great.
And even if something weird happens, like it starts to rain, they're just going to move it inside.
Yes.
So come on out anyway. It's going to be, it's going to be pretty... Do what now?
Well, if you can bring him, we'll be more than happy. He's asking if we'll ever bring Pitbull. I said, oh, sure, you got us a sponsor, we'll take it, more than hap...
I think Counselor Davis just offered to support.
You know, that is so true.
Yeah, so next year...
In our, in our, in our press conference, what we try to do is, give a taste of Latin food, the culture. We usually teach a quick little salsa steps during it. The mayor and the customer have...
The mayor did not dance by popular demand.
And then we have a presentation of salsa dancing, and then we have a variety of the Latin music. So the talking portion was, what, about 10 minutes? That was it. The rest was party, eat, and network.
It's going to be fun. Hope everybody can...
So, welcome to all, and please, take a moment to come by. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if you intend to speak about Mr. Jones.
I was kind of going to wait for confirmation.
Thank you.
Just to make sure. But, but, but I was going to mention, the, what an absolutely amazing job Lisa Goodwin, our deputy city manager, and all of the staff, and I'm going to leave people out, but the Red Cross, and the community warriors, and individual volunteers, DFACS. I mean, you talk about rallying to a, a, a very good cause. We handled, I think, almost 500 people at the Civic Center. There were countless others that found hotels in our community during, during the hurricane that was sweeping up the east coast.
The nursing homes.
Uh, that's right. The nursing homes opened up to people who lived in assisted living facilities in the coastal areas. They had arrangements, and they filled the, the, the homes here in Columbus. So, just want to say, you know, just, we hear, there are a lot of folks that want to sit on the sidelines and throw rocks, because it's safe, it's fun, you don't have your skin in a game. For the folks that actually get involved in this community, y'all make it amazing. You really do. This is, I'm very proud just to be a resident of this community, the way people step up and help others. And, so anyway, good job to, to our staff. Counselor House?
Just one event that I thought of, before we're all talking. Tomorrow, of course, is the anniversary of, of 9/11. American Legion Post 35 is hosting a 9/11 ceremony at 8:30 in the morning. They're on North Lumpkin Road. I'm the guest speaker. That's why I'll be there.
So will there be salsa dancing?
No, there will not be salsa dancing.
Counselor Huff? Whoop, I missed you.
There we go. Just wanted to piggyback with the mayor on the evacuees at the Civic Center. All the ones that he spoke of, they helped out, but I just wanted to take time out, shoot... doesn't hear her name enough, but Corchero Pew. Corchero, Corchero Pew.
I always get it wrong.
Of Corchero Pew of Walmart Victory Drive, didn't wait for us to call her. She reached out to me to see what she could do. She called all of the Walmarts, and all of the Walmarts got involved right away from the start, and they'd made deliveries, I think, for two straight days. So I just wanted to say thank you to her, along with everyone else that was involved.
Pat Fray, Home for Good, was there as well. Counselor Garrett?
Motion adjourned.
Motion, second, adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.